Can everybody hear me out there with this mask on? We'd like to bring to order the regular meeting of February 25th for the Planning Commission. We have Bob Schwartz from Bowling Green. Raise your hand, Bob, please. Thank you. We have Leon Smith from Reedy Church. We have Purcell Minor from Mattapanah. We have Gary Dudley from Western Caroline. We have Dr. Horton from Port Royal. And I'm George Weaver from Madison. We have Michael Finchem, Director of Planning. Chris McKendy, County Attorney, is watching us very carefully so we don't mess up. We have Greg Pennington, County Planner. And we have Lisa Zek, Assistant to the Director. I'd like you now all stand so we can have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Normally at this time, we'd have a throw for minutes, but we have none at this time. We're going to have public hearings this evening. And the first motion will be to amend the agenda to move SPEX 01 2020 Crown Castle to the top of the agenda to speak. Can I have a staff report, please?
You have to have a motion to move that?
Oh, I have to have a motion? Okay. I make a motion that we move SPEX 01 2020 to the top of the agenda.
Second.
Here, a second from Mr... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? You can now move it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. SPEX 01 2020, the applicant has withdrawn their application as of this morning, and so that is no longer a case, and we can move forward.
Was there any, Craig? Was there any specific reason why? None.
They just stated that they wanted to withdraw their application.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't need any more than that, do I?
Motion to accept the withdrawal.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The motion carries. Ms. Zek, would you be so kind as to read us the public hearing protocol, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the Chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes at a minimum, as determined by the Planning Commission, to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested, keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. We do have a timer set that the citizens will be able to see, as well as members of the Planning Commission, to keep within the three minutes. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you. Did everybody understand what that was about? That's the protocol for a public hearing. So I guess the first thing that's going to happen is we're going to ask for RZ 01 2017 Woodland Belmont. Staff report, please. Mr. Finchem.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, your first public hearing tonight is RZ 01-2017 Woodland Belmont LLC. The proposed project's name is Belmont North 2. The applicant is requesting modifications to previously accepted proffers and development plan approved with RZ 11-2007, including but not limited to amendments to modify the infrastructure improvements, eliminate certain proffers, including some transportation improvements, modify the prepayment of utility fees, increase cash proffers, and modifying the land dedication and construction proffers for public uses, including the elimination of a fire station that was approved with RZ 11 2017. Staff forwarded copies of the proffer amendment to several of our county review agencies, Public Utilities, and VDOT. We did receive some comments from VDOT late yesterday that had been provided to you this evening. We have not yet had a chance to review those proffer or those comments in detail, so we really can't speak to the comments raised by VDOT in their letter. The Board originally approved RZ 11-2017. It is October 9, 2008, meeting. A copy of the approved proffers and the development plan are included in your packet under Attachment 1. Those are the proffers and a GDP that is in effect at this time. The original zoning request was subject to an extensive fiscal impact analysis, as well as a development analysis, resulting in the accepted proffer package and the development plan. In 2017, Woodland Belmont LLC submitted an amendment to the original rezoning. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in June of that year and forwarded the application to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of denial. The applicant subsequently requested a deferral of consideration of their rezoning amendment prior to it ever making to the Board of Supervisors for public hearing. At this time, the applicant has a prospective purchaser for the project and has requested that the rezoning amendment be placed back on the Board's agenda for consideration. The Board of Supervisors took up their request and referred it back to the Planning Commission for additional review and analysis, given the length of time that the application had been deferred, and based upon the fact that the applicant was revising proffers from what had been requested in 2017. The current zoning application before you, RZ 01 2017, proposes to modify the current proffers in place as generally outlined previously in the staff report. You also have a copy of their requested proffer modifications and a key sheet to help you identify what proffers they are requesting to be modified. Attachment 3 also contains a redlined version of the current proffers with the proposed amended proffers, so that you can see line by line what those requested changes are. Staff will, at this point in time, address any questions that the Commission may have.
Gentlemen, any questions, please?
Yes, Mr. Finchem. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I couldn't help but notice that there were a lot of notations in script handwriting, in margins, squeezed in. Why was that? Was it that last-minute thoughts or...?
With the original proffers? Yes, sir. There were some last-minute modifications to the proffers prior to the public hearing, the then-public hearing at the Board of Supervisors.
And I can only assume, I don't like to assume, but I take it for granted that there was a lot of discussion, a lot of thought process put into what was going on at the time.
Yes, sir.
So in essence, in 2017, the wheel was invented for Belmont North. Is that correct?
In 2017, the owner... We were still in the midst of the economic downturn in the county from a housing perspective. We have never recovered to the 2008 housing levels or even prior to that. So in 2017, the applicant submitted a proffer amendment that would have, if approved, relieved them of the majority of the proffers that had a financial impact on the developer of the property. For example, they were requesting removal or elimination of the cash proffers. They were requesting elimination of the fire station, certain road improvements, some of which are still on the table. But since then, the economic conditions have improved, shall we say, from a housing perspective. And the proffer amendments they are requesting do not, for example, remove the cash proffer. It actually increases the proposed cash proffer from what the current value in the currently accepted proffers are. It increases them by about $3,200 per dwelling to help offset the requested deletion of the fire station and some of the transportation improvements.
And, sir, you have touched on what I consider a most important part. We're speaking of 525, 26 units going into this development, and we're taking the fire station off the board. As someone who just last month had a neighbor two doors from me lose their home and all of their belongings in a house fire, the fire station touches home to me. And I think I would be amiss in my duty to the citizens of the county if I didn't try to hold tight to the fire station issue. Everything else, as far as I'm concerned, is peripheral and can be worked out. But when it comes to fire and 525 units, not counting what's already in the area, I want to make sure that we have adequate fire protection.
Understood. Yes, sir. Let me address one aspect of that. We are not abandoning a fire station in Carmel Church altogether. We actually have identified another station location site across the street from Belmont. And we have the prospective purchase agreement out with the property owner now. And the Board is currently considering the funding for that fire station. So we still have active plans for a fire station in the Carmel Church area that are moving forward. And pending the receipt of the signed contract or the signed agreement from the property owner, we'll begin site plan preparation on that site shortly.
Okay. And that was my concern. I just didn't want potentially 500 and some dwellings out there being left with less than sufficient fire protection.
Understood.
Thank you.
When the Board of Supervisors, back in 2008, as the county made adjustments money-wise, and now I meant to offset, just as the county looked at that to see, you know, this was brought up in 2008.
Yes, sir.
And now it's 2021.
Yes, sir.
So the county would eat most of this?
There have been a couple of changes in the state code since 2008. And I don't have the dates off the top of my head, and I will not ask the county attorney, although he may have them. Somewhere around 2015, 2016, the General Assembly significantly amended the proffer legislation, specifically as it, or significantly as it relates to residential development. Several years later, they amended that legislation again. And although it wasn't quite the same language as the pre-2015 changes, it restored many of the county's ability to accept cash proffers and other proffers related to development, more consistent with the pre-2015 legislation. We have not, we have done a school study since then to look at the school generation figures. The applicant still has proffered potentially a 20-acre site for public use, which could be a school. And we're working on an analysis of what the difference between the 2008 proffer package was and what the current proposed proffer package is, just so that you can see some numbers there and tie all that back in together for you.
When will you...
I was going to try to have it for tonight, but yeah, it just didn't make it.
Because, I mean, Carol asked the right question, just the same question I would ask. I would like to know the difference between point A and point B. I mean, how much are we giving back, or how much are we getting in? So I definitely think that that would be something I'd like to see more.
Yes, sir.
All right. I think we're ready to listen to the applicant. Oh, now Michael's doing it. Oh. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Please step forward.
What's that?
Oh, look.
Okay. Very good.
He did actually turn them on. Sorry, now you can't see us.
Yeah, I can see.
That's how you can't see us.
Good evening. My name is Sadek Gill, and I'm an attorney out of Richmond. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Woodland Belmont North. And with me tonight, I have, to my left, is Jeffrey Staples. He's the managing member of the LLC that owns the property. Here in the audience, I have Matt Seeley, who's involved with the project. We have the engineer from Dewberry Davis. She's right there. And we also have, and they're not going to say anything, but just so you know that they're interested and certainly avid supporters of the project, we have two gentlemen from Ryan Homes, Will Kennedy, Brian Bowe. So I guess I will start this out by saying that this project, obviously, is, in some respects, been in the works for almost 15 years. And it has gone through various iterations as the economy has ebbed and flowed. I think here in the last, probably, excuse me, probably in the last 15 years, the economic realities of Caroline County and housing development in Caroline County have, they've not done well. I think originally, the lots in this were selling for, I think, almost $140,000. And now the projected price is probably 57% of that. So rather than following the trend that other real estate within the U.S., within this, the central Virginia area, has followed, has seen it an increase, it's actually, not only has it not increased, but it's decreased. So I guess I come to this more from the standpoint of, you know, as opposed to examining the individual proffers word by word by word, I hope to convince the Commission that Caroline needs this development, that you have a very strong developer here in Belmont Woodland. They have the backing of a very major player in the housing industry, in Ryan Homes, and that this is a project that really should happen. In my review of, in getting ready for this, I came across a memorandum that the county administrator, Mr. Cully, wrote back in 2008, I'm sorry, 2018. And I don't know if you all are familiar with that. I believe you probably are, that he notes that the county has really fallen behind in terms of population growth, in terms of home-building lots, in terms of, you know, that type of economic activity. And I think he, in some respects, forecasts that without some improvement, without some change in conditions, that the housing market, the housing, the population in Caroline will become dormant, and the fee structure, the tax structure will be adversely affected. So this is 526 homes. It's phased over a period of years, so it's not an immediate, you know, jump to the system. But it's a fantastic development. It does things to other developments. There's some amenities that will go in that will benefit other developments in the adjacent areas. You know, the proffers, as you go through them, like, for example, one of the changes in the proffer is the reduction in the sewer and water fees. And that's something that the county itself proposed, and that was something Mr. Cully proposed in his memo to assist in development. So that's not a change that we're necess, that, I mean, we didn't propose that, we didn't come up with that. That's something we're simply following. In fact, in his memo, he suggested that perhaps cash proffers be done away with, or at least a moratorium. And we've come back, in light of some of the other things, fire station being one of them, we've increased our cash proffers. So we're not here asking for no cash proffers. You know, the transportation issues are issues that could be worked out during building. We don't see them. I mean, we looked through the VDOT comments. We got them from Mr. Finchem today. And, you know, those are issues that can be worked out during the course of construction or during the course of planning. So I guess I'm here to urge the approval of these amendments and to allow this project to go forward. I mean, at this point in time, the country, the economy is such that housing starts, unlike lots of other aspects of, you know, restaurants and other types of businesses, housing is doing really well. And we would like to take advantage, we would like Caroline to take advantage of the current environment to allow this project to go forward, to allow this development to go forward. You guys recently started, or started up a new wastewater treatment facility. There's, I mean, I think I read somewhere that there's a subsidy that's going from the county to the utility fund. You know, that can't last forever. I mean, you guys need people to contribute to that. You need tax dollars. You need a growth in tax base. I think in Mr. Cully's memo, at least at the time, he identified, I think, 52 billable lots in Caroline, which is just, I mean, that's a drop in the bucket. So I would urge you all to approve this. If there's any questions, I've got folks here to answer the very, if there's any very specific questions, Mr. Staples can answer those, or, you know, some of the other folks we have here supporting this can answer. So I would, at this point, see if you all have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
That's what the memo that I saw said.
Do you know how many are available today?
I don't know. I don't think there's been a dramatic rise in billable lots in Caroline. Maybe if I'm wrong, I'm glad to be wrong.
Commissioners? Hearing none? I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Again, my name is Jeff Staples. After we purchased the property in 2013, and we looked at the proffers and looked at the economic conditions, and we felt that there wasn't a way that we could move forward with the project based on the almost zero demand for lots in 2013, plus the fact that the amount of proffers that were there. So we came in 2017, and the economy was getting better, and we made an offer to the Planning Commission about increasing the proffers a little bit, doing away with the firehouse, and putting in a, or making available to the county, a school site, which is still one of the same proffers that are there. And based on the conditions at that time, as Mr. Finchem said, it was turned down, and we decided just to sit on it and wait for the economy to change. And Ryan Homes approached us and wants to work very diligently with us. They have a package that they think meets the demand of Caroline County, and they are very, very anxious to get started and are here to answer any questions you may have of their interest in the project, to let you know how strong their interest is. And I believe that in your package, you have a copy of a letter that I wrote to Mr. Cully, which lists a number of items. I don't know if you all have that or not, or if you all have seen it. It was a letter, it would, it looks, I don't know if you can see this, you can see that little symbol right there. And that was a letter I wrote to him, just letting him follow up onto his memo on 2018 that we looked at a fiscal impact analysis as relates to revenue. And the summary is, and I've got backup information in that that was included with that letter, that in after the first year of Ryan gone, which their projection is 124 houses, it would generate $2,871,175 after the first year. And at buildout, it would produce $12,77,243. And the final sheet was a breakdown of how that was gotten. And the 526 houses would produce $1.2 million in property taxes. And the 526 houses would produce $1.2 million in property taxes, assuming a value of a house at 275,000. And annual personal property taxes, assuming two cars per vehicle, it would produce about $841,000. And just from county sticker tax and tags and, and utility, would be another $44,000 per year for each one of those items. So based on what Mr. Cully wrote in his memo, I wanted to provide that information to him and then to, to the commission, so that you would see what the project is offering to the county. I also reached out to the homeowners association of Belmont and Carmel Church, which is, which butts, well, will be abutting next to them. And one of the proper amendments is, or proffer that are in there that we did not amend, is that we will build a community center, which includes pool building and play, a utility field and a volleyball court, that will be open to Belmont and Carmel Church on a fee basis. I've asked the homeowners association to let the people know, and I understand that that was done. And the, the word I got back, of course, that'll be, as soon as this is a public hearing, you will find out if they are for it or not, you know, that type of thing. So I have not been privileged to know exactly what the outcome of our request, but we asked them to come and support us because they would love to have a pool for their project. So. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I, I, well, I know I saw the answer when this was proposed before, but where is the property for the school?
That, that has not been identified.
Okay, it hasn't been identified.
No, ma'am. In the original proffers, it said a school site, and that was another one of those handwritten things, that said, agreed upon by the county and the developer.
Okay.
20 acres.
Because the location is, is going to be, you know, important.
Right. Actually, if you, if you look back there, at there, and you see the section E and that little arrow going off to right, that's where we would, well, I don't know, if somebody can push that up just a little bit, I don't know if you can move that screen up just a little bit, if you can do that, please, so we can see more down there. I don't know, it should be there. All right, you see that next arrow coming down where the H is? No, well, that, well, that's. The, right, that H, right, I mean, that arrow right there, we feel like ideally, that would be a great place if we could get this property owner to sell it. We feel like, because, see, that right there takes you right out to 207, which is about right there, maybe a little further, that's where the stoplight is, to the industrial park. And we think that would be, that would be a wonderful place to put it, if we could acquire that property. I mean, we don't have eminent domain, so we can't force them to do it. Off the property up here, across Moncur, my, well, just for your information, about up there where that light is up there, that's where I grew up. So I'm quite familiar with the property. And we own some property right about in here, that if it came push, come to shove, we could put it there. And in discussions with Mr. Fincham, he felt like that on the opposite side of Moncur Road or Drive, I think it's called now, would be acceptable to the county. But then, again, we have to go through the, the, you know, whoever's going to be making this, the decision, would work with us on, on doing that. But we would ideally like to have it right there. And our, our, our talk to Flippo Properties will be, if that property is ever developed, that would be a fantastic draw for them to have that elementary school right there. And that would be ideal to have it there.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I hear some of the, some of the information that's being passed around as to where a school could possibly be, be built. We, as planning commissioners, have a tough time when you start talking about somebody else's property, okay? I mean, I understand, it's a great location, except you don't own that piece of property?
No, sir.
So therefore, I'm very reluctant to say, that's a great place for a school to be built, when they don't own the property. I'd rather have them say, I like another corner that we could possibly devote 20 acres to the school.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, that's why I mentioned, we do, we do own the property across Moncur. So we, we had that as backup, that property, which in earlier discussions with Mr. Fincham, we mentioned that we have that property in our ownership, and then that is in the proximity of, of his thinking would possibly be approved.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I guess. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Is this time to open the public hearing, is that correct? Go ahead. If I may, please.
I asked Mr. Fincham, and he says that there's 250 to 350 lots that have been platted in answer to the question. It's 52 lots, 2018. So yes, there are more lots now, but I think our point being, there could be more, which I think is, is probably ultimately good for Caroline County. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for RZ 01, 2017, Woodland Belmont. Hearing is open. Is there anybody here who wants to speak on this application? This gentleman does.
Good evening. My name is Keith Edwards. My address is, well, if it's possible, I'd really like to not have that on the internet.
It's in Caroline County.
It is in Caroline County, and it's actually within the Belmont current community.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to speak my personal opinion of the expansion of the community. I think it is a great idea. Many in my community reflect the same ideology with the, the new north expansion. As a homeowner within the community, though, I do have to state that I have to agree with Mr. Schwartz. The firehouse, I do not feel is a negotiable term to the, to the project. I feel that it is entirely necessary, be it through the developer building it, the county building it, whatever. It's crucial that that's done. There are many within my community that cannot even get homeowners insurance, because we don't have a fire station nearby. We have to go through, personally, I'm through USAA. Many just can't afford to buy the homeowners insurance because of that. And I think that may be a deterrent to residents moving into the community. The, I'm not knocking our, our Carolines bravest at all. I know they do the best they can, but when you're geographically many miles away, it does not take long, as, again, the gentleman said, it does not take very long for a house to go down in a fire, in a flame. It's just the inevitable course of nature. Again, I feel it's a great idea. I feel, I've been a resident here in the county since 2017, when we purchased our townhouse in the development, in the current Belmont development. We were very excited to move back into the, or move to the county, I'm sorry, and to, and to join the Caroline community as a whole. Belmont has worked very hard in the last few years to both clean up our, our community, to improve the landscaping, to improve the cosmetics of it, make it more family friendly, things of that nature. And I feel that the additional homes would be a great addition to the community as itself and to Caroline as a whole. But again, I know my time is running short, so, again, my, my main worry is, I really feel like the fire department, or the new fire station, is really a non-negotiable item related to this, this project. But that's all I have. I appreciate your all's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none. At this time, I close the open public hearing. Do the applicant have anything they wish to say?
In response to the, to the comments, I think, if I heard Mr. Fincham correctly, that the county is planning a fire station in, in the same locale, that it's no longer a necessary part of the proffer for this particular development. And we've attempted to offset that by increasing our cash proffers. So I think, if I understood his comments correctly, that that's, that's what he was proposing, that the county's in the process of securing a fire station site. Certainly, the increased revenue would certainly help offset the cost of staffing and building a firehouse. So I think that, that concern is, is, sounds like it's met, and met without having it included in, in the specific proffer. I would, again, just urge the commission that, that, you know, it's, current market conditions are very favorable for the housing industry, so sooner is better than later, because things could turn again. And, I mean, this project was considerably more valuable 15 years ago, so here we are, a second time up, and I fear that if, you know, there, there comes a time when we're a third time up, it'll, it will be even less valuable at that point in time, or even perhaps not feasible. So, again, I would urge the commission to approve the changes that we've made. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Staples?
Yes, sir.
You're the project manager, correct?
Part, part owner in. Yes, sir.
Let me, this project would be conducted in phases.
Yes, sir. It's, it's mandated in the proffers. I'm not sure which proffer number, it's 150, 150, 150, and then the balance.
Let me take a leap. Let's leap to the point where we have board supervisor's approval. And upon receiving that approval, can you project how long it would take before you would begin construction?
If we could get board approval in April, which we are, best of my knowledge, set for, set for April, we would immediately start working on the first section of drawings. And we are hoping that if everything went right before the winter season, that Ryan would have houses under roof. That's pretty aggressive. Yes, sir. It is. However.
Godspeed to your honor.
Well, if we get approval and, and we, you know, sweet talk Mr. Fincham and get everybody there to help us, it can happen, but under normal circumstances, yes, sir.
All right. And I, I guess, what I'm really getting at is, how many years, if all goes well, how many years do you anticipate or project it might take from shovel-ready to last June?
Well, if it was up to Ryan Homes, and this was a comment that I said to Mr. Fincham, and I'll get to your answer in a second. Far as Ryan Home is concerned, back when we started talking seriously with Ryan Homes back in November, they would be happy if the next day, we had board approval and construction plans the following day, they would be ready to go and start building right away. They are, the two gentlemen are here, they'll verify that, they are very, very anxious to get going. And to answer your question, they were hoping that, that the 150 lots would be slowing them up. So based on that, I would estimate probably five years from shovels, you know, we start turning dirt until we've sold the last one.
And the reason I ask, sir, is not to try to pin you down on anything, but I'm looking at the projection for the fire protection as well, to see if, you know, can we get this somewhat, or get it coordinated some way, as we're making progress with the project, that we also make sure that we do have some protection out there, not only for fire, but EMS, everything involved. I want to make sure that we're ready to serve the citizens should they.
Right. Yes, sir. But based on the package that you have in the, in the first, well, after the first year of us being out there, the only 124 lots, which is Ryan's projection for the first year, you generate enough revenue to cover the cost of the firehouse.
That's, that's what I've got.
And then the second year, it's, you know, you're getting more, and then more and more and more, that type of thing. And so.
And you're also getting fees for your sewer and water.
Well, that's all included in that, all those fees.
Just don't want our citizens that they're dangling, and.
Well. The way the proffer was originally written, if we started, we had 18 months to have the firehouse under, almost complete. And Mr. Gill mentioned 140,000, to be exact. The prior developer in Belmont and Carmel Church sold 55 lots in 2006, for $115,000 a lot, and we're only getting 54.8% of that now. So with that two and a half million dollar plus the procurement of the land, we can't, if we had to do that, I mean, we, the economics of it, just saying, that's why we've, we've had to sit, because there was no demand for lots, and at 54%, what was gotten in 2006, that's why we're asking for relief of that. However, by paying increase in cash proffers, the county gets more money, but it'll be over time. And if the economy roars right along, and we're go back to the planning commission, can we have 200 lots? Okay? You get, it's even quicker, but, you know, it's a lovely, you know, thing we'd like to have, but I don't know if it'll happen, but.
Right for you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are the new Ryland homes that are going to be built, are they consistent with the other single-family dwellings in size, price?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, I asked them to answer that for you. So, Will, hey, Will, will you come forward?
Ryan?
Basically, what I'm asking is, the people in this development going to be happy that it hasn't jumped to something different? No.
No. But, well, let's ask, they're the experts. They, they have done all the marketing and everything, and they'll be able to answer, you know, with, I don't know what square footage, I don't, you know, exactly what they, they have told us is comparable, so.
Good evening. Everything should be fairly comparable to what you see there. I'm afraid we don't have validations with this this evening. We're happy to provide them separately for you. But this, we expect the single-family homes to range in size between 1,400 to 2,500 square feet, depending on the model, and the townhomes to be somewhere between 1,200 and 1,600 square feet. This particular project also has an age-targeted component, so it will have master-down product that'll be offered in the Villas. so it will have master-down product that'll be offered in the Villas. And pricing, we expect to be, and again, this is a projection, but we feel fairly comfortable that we'll be in the 200s for townhomes and then in the upper 2s to mid 3s for the single-family detached. And we're happy to supply the elevations to you or show you generally what that would look like. We're very proud of the product, and we think it would, it would complement the architecture of the existing community. Thank you. We're, we're excited, we're excited to be in Caroline County.
I'm not going to ask for all the details, you know.
But we're, we're happy to provide them, and we really, we, we think it'll be a great project. We're excited. We would, we would love to see this move forward. So to the degree that we can be partners with Caroline County, we would love to be.
Because Caroline, I mean, is very much, I mean, it was mentioned that we're a gradual growth community. That's because of the citizens' vassal. I mean, that's what we represent. And so, you know, that's why we asked about details like this. I know the western side is, you know, our growth area, and people have asked for more growth over there. You know, on the eastern, eastern side, Caroline's more rural, but yeah. So as long as the house are, houses are, you know, it flows, it's comparable, you know, then we probably won't hear complaints from citizens, but.
And the plan that was approved, I believe the one that was shown, there, the road network has not been changed. And the general configuration of the GDP has not changed, to my knowledge. So I don't want to speak for the applicant. I'm just the builder, so. We're pleased with the plan. We think it looks really good. We would be very excited to be the home builder.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay. We have a discussion amongst the board. Mr. Schwartz? This is just an open discussion, but I'm making a motion yet.
I'm just wondering if we need more time to really delve into the revised proffer as opposed to what the original proffers were. I realize it's a give-and-take situation. I don't want to take too much, but I don't want to give up too much. So, you know, I'm just going it out there as to how the rest of the committee feels about maybe delving into the problem just a little bit deeper and see where we stand and come back to this, maybe next.
I agree. I think this is a good start. I, I think we all feel kind of the same because I'm concerned, my biggest concern is the fact that when they start showing us a possibility for a school location, that they don't even own the land. Okay, and then poor Mr. Fincham's over there saying that the county is negotiating for a, for a firehouse on the other side of the road. I don't say it's not going to happen. I'm not saying that at all. But it seems to me there's, there's a lot of vagueness here that we're going to be expected to render a decision on the information that's in front of us. Right now, I'll be honest, I'm not comfortable with the information that's in front of us.
Yeah, because if something fails, it's going to, the first step is here on fail.
I, I would like to see the comparison list, and I think Mr. Fincham said that would be available next one. So we'll know what we're giving up and what we're gaining.
Anybody want to make a motion, please? Make a motion. We defer RC 012017 to the March 8th.
Second, second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That motion will go through that way. Thank you. Okay, so something Zach, you don't have to do another explanation, right? We're just going to the next one? Thank you. All right. Next public hearing will be SPX 02-20. Order Rural Family Development Head Start Program. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception permit for a childcare facility pursuant to Article 6, Section 3.5 of the Caroline County zoning ordinance.
Craig?
Yes.
Drop your mask and speak into your microphone. I'm sorry. I know.
Would you like me to start over? The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception permit for a childcare facility pursuant to Article 6, Section 3.5 of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. Rural Family Development, RFD, is a nonprofit organization operating the Head Start program for preschool children. In 2018, Rural Family Development, Inc. was awarded a five-year grant to continue providing Head Start services in Caroline County. RFD currently operates three classrooms in two of the county's elementary schools. Head Start operates during the standard school year, during standard school hours. Children eligible for transportation provided by the Caroline County Public Schools are bused to the elementary schools and then bused to the Head Start classrooms if necessary. Children who are three years of age are not, three years of age, I'm sorry, are not eligible for transportation and must be dropped off by a guardian. The applicant is requesting this special exception permit to construct a new building on the subject parcel for the sole purpose of operating a Head Start facility. The structure is proposed to be a 12,400-square-foot modular building that will accommodate approximately 95 children and administrative staff. The planning department recommends that the applicant utilize the interparcial connection in Brookwood subdivision as the entrance to the project. The applicant declined to do so through comments. And however, the planning commission can make this recommendation, a recommended condition of approval. If the entrance to Route 301 is allowed by the commission, then full frontage improvements with a deceleration lane and acceleration lane is required consistent with the highway corridor overlay district requirements. Route 301 is a major arterial highway, and stacking of vehicles in the morning or afternoon cannot impact the roadway. The VDOT comments were addressed with exception to the suggestion of using Brookwood subdivision interparcial connection. VDOT has stated that if the entrance to the site from Route 301 is going to be utilized, then a traffic study will need to be done to determine if a full-length turn lane is necessary from Route 301. Caroline County Public Schools has provided a comment letter, which is included in your packet, and the applicant's response to the comments from Caroline County Public Schools is also included. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be commercial and low-density residential, and this use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff has provided eight suggested conditions for the commission to look at, first being to which shall be recorded at Circuit Court. Drop-off pickup areas shall be designed so that stacking of vehicles does not impede the flow of traffic on Route 301. A review by the board of supervisors shall occur two years after issuance of a certificate of occupancy by Caroline County building official. The applicant shall utilize the property in conformance with the general development plan that has been submitted as prepared by Advanced Engineering LLC dated December 20, 2020. Any expansion of the facility shall require an amendment to the special exception. A site plan in accordance with the requirements of Article 15, Section 14 of the zoning ordinance shall be submitted and approved. The regulations of the Commonwealth of Virginia associated with license to operate daycare centers shall be incorporated as conditions associated with this application. And site improvements, if necessary, as required by ordinance, VDOT, or other agencies shall be installed at the applicant's expense prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear, and I, you know, I know I have the materials before me. The entrance to this Head Start care, where is the entrance off of 301?
Originally, RFD proposed an entrance off of Route 301. If you look at the map we provided, the parcel outlined in purple or blue, the entrance would be pretty much to the north side of that parcel. There is a site plan a couple pages behind the map.
I think what I'm asking, there was something about staff suggested that they go through Brookwood.
Yes. So if you look at that map that we provided, you can see where there's an interparcial connection through the Brookwood subdivision that connects to this property. That was designed for access to this property to minimize entrances off of Route 301. So county staff suggested that they use that entrance through the Brookwood subdivision to enter into the site, as well as that was a VDOT comment. VDOT also provided a comment if they want to use 301 as the entrance and about that being a one-way loop. The applicant put on the new site plan a proposed entrance in both places. However, if they can't construct the entrance through the Brookwood subdivision, our ordinance calls for full frontal improvements on 301, where they would have to do a deceleration lane to turn in and an acceleration lane to turn out. And VDOT stated that they would also require a traffic study for turn lane warrants to determine if they need a full-length right turn lane into the site. So if they choose to use Brookwood, they don't have to do that traffic study on 301 for the turn lanes or put in acceleration or deceleration lanes. However, if they choose to use the 301 entrance, they will have to do that traffic study and will require acceleration, deceleration. VDOT may require more.
But at this time, they're considering both options? Is that what you're telling me?
The most recent plan that was provided shows a proposed entrance at Brookwood and a proposed entrance on 301.
So they are looking for two entrances to this space?
I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure if they put it on there to choose.
Okay, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're going to choose which entrance.
The applicant will tell us what they're thinking.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the commissioners to staff? Okay, so, I think it's time we have a little presentation from the applicant. The applicant here.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Carrington, and I am, thank you. Which way? Okay, thank you. I'm, my name is Michelle Carrington. I'm the interim director for Rural Family Development Head Start Program. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present information regarding our program to you this evening. I will begin by sharing an overview of our Head Start, of Head Start and Rural Family Development and how we work to support children and families here in Caroline County. Our project manager, Mr. Larry Murphy, and our project engineer, Mr. Jeff Keith, will then share details of our proposed facility. Head Start, as many of you may know, is a nationally, is a national program for early childhood, and it is under the Department of Health and Human Services. It began in 1965 as a six-week summer program for children from low-income families as an effort under the War on Poverty. Because of its success and positive impact on children and families, it became a year-round program that has, has existed for over 50 years. Head Start operations are governed by federal regulations known as the Head Start Program Performance Standards and the Head Start Act to ensure that we provide comprehensive services to children and their families. Head Start is administered across the United States in many formats that are based on the region and the needs of the community being served. Organizations known as grantees receive federal funding to administer the program under one or more program options based on the region and the needs of that community being served. Some of the types of grantees include community action agencies, government agencies, charter schools, for-profit businesses, private, non-profit agencies, school divisions, and tribal government organizations. As you will see on the slide, only 14% of national Head Start programs and 28% of Head Start programs here in Virginia are operated by school districts. The other programs are operated through those types of agencies that I previously named. Rural Family Development is a nonprofit agency that administers Head Start here in Caroline County. Rural Family Development, sorry. Rural Family Development is a program under the Virginia Council of Churches, which has been in existence for over 70 years. Rural Family Development has always worked to support underserved children and families throughout Virginia and previously operated five migrant Head Start programs and now operates the current Head Start program. And we are funded to serve 95 children. Our classrooms are currently located inside of Lewis and Clark Elementary School with two classrooms, Madison Elementary School with one classroom, and Bowling Green School Board Office that houses the remaining two classrooms. Some of our administrative staff are also located at the Bowling Green site. To date, Rural Family Development has served over 600 children and families in Caroline County through our current Head Start model. Our program focuses on preparing children for kindergarten and providing comprehensive services to support the child's family. Our teachers are trained and educated in early childhood education and understand child development. To prepare our children for kindergarten, our teachers implement the Big Day for Pre-K curriculum, which is also used by Caroline County Public Schools. We have a daily schedule for each class that includes specific lessons to promote language and literacy skills, early math and science skills, social-emotional development, and incorporates individualized experiences based on the needs of each child. Our children receive health and developmental screenings, home visits, parent-teacher conferences to discuss their progress, and attend field trips. We also provide specific steps to prepare our children to transition to kindergarten. We also employ family services staff who have backgrounds and education in human services such as social work, psychology, sociology, and health services. Our staff work with parents to build a relationship to support them with their identified goals. Our staff also work to facilitate collaborative partnerships with community organizations that provide services to children and families that are responsive to their needs. We provide parent training, sponsor family events, and offer opportunities for parents to volunteer. Unique to Head Start is the vital role that our parents play in the operation of the program through program governance. Parents are elected by their peers to work closely with the program director and board of directors as an integral part of program oversight and implementation. Caroline County Public Schools currently provides many supportive services to our program. Our four-year-old students, as previously stated, are transported to and from school by school bus services. Our program contracts with Caroline County Public Schools to provide meals for our students and teaching staff. Our meals include breakfast, lunch, and. Our meals include breakfast, lunch, and snack each day. There are also opportunities for joint training with Caroline County Public Schools and Rural Family Development staff during the school year. Despite some issues that occur throughout the year, we feel that the services above work well for Rural Family Development, including services to children with or suspected of having disabilities. What you see before you are a list of the major challenges that we have in our current spaces and the reasons why having our own facility is vital for our program's success. In August of last year, an appraisal of our allotted spaces was completed and shows that three of our five classrooms are too small to meet the required square footage per child based on our federal regulations. We are funded to serve 95 students. However, we are only able to serve 82 students in the current classroom space to remain in compliance with our regulations. Other challenges include the inability to use playgrounds in each school due to the size of the playground equipment and them being designated for school-aged students. The need for permission from Caroline County Public Schools to use space for parent meetings and events is also a challenge and, um, in our being able to schedule events. Meals being served in the cafeteria with the public school students instead of family-style dining, as Head Start recommends, is also a challenge. And health and safety issues at all sites are a concern for us. I would now like to share some photos from each of our sites, which illustrate our concerns with health and safety. Lewis and Clark is the newest of our locations and the classes are large enough to accommodate our funded enrollment. However, we are unable to use the playground, as I previously stated, because of the equipment not being sized for preschool, not being sized and designated for preschool-aged children. There is also a lack of storage space, which causes teachers to have to store materials in the restroom, as you'll see on the bottom right, um, container stacked on top of a table, which creates an opportunity for injuries to our students. Our classes at Bowling Green are smaller and do not allow us to meet funded enrollment. Our administrative staff share one office space that does not allow for privacy when discussing confidential information with parents and other staff. The photos above show mold growing in ceiling tiles, cracks and holes in floor tiles, which creates trip hazards for our students, cracks in walls and chipping paint, cold water in the hand-washing sinks. The cub, and also the cubbies, um, if you look at the photo on the bottom left, are located behind a wall, which obstructs sight and 100% supervision by teachers, which is a requirement of Head Start. Our Madison site presents the most risk to the health and safety of our students and staff. Our classroom is located in a trailer behind the main school building. Although there are other trailers, ours is the only one that houses students regularly on a daily basis. Our students travel several times daily between the trailer and school building despite weather conditions. When our staff need to use the restroom, they must travel into the building because the restroom is, in the trailer, is designated for students only. This presents a supervision issue because leaving one staff member with more than 10 students at a time is not compliant with our federal regulations. These pictures show the location and condition of the outside of the trailer. The underpinning and ramp leading to the doors have since been repaired. However, issues within the trailer remain. As you can see, the inside of the trailer is very small and only allows for 14 students, which is less than our funded enrollment for that location. There are many health and safety issues present, which includes cracked floor tiles and soft spots in the floor that sink when you stand on them, mold, mildew, and water stains on the ceilings and walls, a broken electrical panel that does not close, taped pipes in the bathroom, leaks from the roof when it rains, holes that allow access for rodents, peeling, wallpaper, and paneling. For these reasons, Rural Family Development needs our own Head Start Center here in Caroline County to serve our children and families. I will now have Mr. Murphy and Mr. Keith provide an overview of our proposed new Head Start facility.
Thank you, Ms. Carrington. Kevin Moore, thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Larry Murphy. I'm a general contractor and project manager for Rural Family Development. We've been working and I want to thank the planning department for their guidance, uh, as we've been pulling together this plan. Uh, this site is located on 6.4 acres, which is south of Bowling Green on Route 301, heading south outside of the town. I have a couple of renderings. I also have copies, not being sure how to, um, address. I have copies of what I'm going to be showing here for each of you. Uh, as you can see from the site development map. Which one? Uh, here's a proposed building. Here's 301 South. It's heading in this direction. Uh, this is the site. Again, this is southbound 301. Here's the site, 6.64 acres. Uh, we are south of the Brookwood subdivision, which is in this area here. We are planning to utilize the Brookwood subdivision as an entrance into this site. However, um, it makes it very difficult to see the site from Route 301 if folks are traveling through Brookwood to get to the site. So, uh, we're proposing that we use both entrances. One, the site from Brookwood subdivision, but also have an entrance possibly for just staff. Uh, but most of our traffic, buses, and parents will be coming through this Brookwood subdivision. We have adequate parking, which is located here and also here, in addition to bus parking. So there should not be a backup on Route 301. Uh, we've decreased the size of the building, uh, which will be getting a, a new plan. It's going to be 9,500 square feet. It will be a, a steel structure, uh, which, uh, I'll show a, a rendering in a minute. You should have a rendering of the structure in your package. Here's a rendering of the proposed building. Uh, that should be page two of your packet. Uh, as I mentioned, it'll be a steel structure on a slab foundation, um, which will meet all the codes and regulations, not only of the state, but also Caroline County, if we're fortunate enough to get to that, uh, to that stage. We also have a floor plan, which meets the needs of Rural Family Development Head Start. It meets the needs of the Head Start program and the federal regulations associated with the program. So I'll now show you, which is page three, a copy of the floor plan. As you can see, we have adequate space. We have, um, five classrooms with a projected, uh, attendance of 20 students per classroom. The next slide. Okay, I'm sorry. Talking... Which one? This one? Right? Not working. This one? Not working. There we go. This is the layout of the classrooms. We have five classrooms. We have, um, adequate conference space for private conversations. Uh, we have appropriate drop-off and pickup location for children. We also have separate adult, um, bathrooms. We have adequate bathroom space within the classroom for each child, uh, which meets the head qua, uh, Head Start requirements. Uh, we also have adequate space for staff. And the feeling is the consolidation, uh, of, into one location will definitely, uh, increase efficiency and also utilization of, uh, of this building. So with that, I believe that's our, our presentation. We'll be open to any questions or comments. Couple more slides. Ms. Carrington?
Yes, I do have.
We've, we've hit our 15 minutes. Yeah, and so if it's something real quick, then we can hit that, but...
Yes, it's very quick. Um, I just want to add that the, uh, space will also include, um, adequate playground equipment, um, that is designated for our, um, students. And I want to thank you, um, for your consideration of our request. Um, we want to have this pro, this site for our children because we feel like they deserve a healthy and safe environment to continue learning and our, uh, s- staff would like to also feel like they are together, can work together, and do their best. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah. Yeah, you want questions now or you want to wait or?
I want to hear your question.
So, so we'll call the applicant back up. I just had a few questions. So, is there any, uh, you said six, something over six acres here. I have it in my, oh, 6.64. Is there any room here to, uh, expand in the future? It looks like it is. For another building or for extension of this building or?
Uh, we, right now, we will be constrained with utilities. And so we've worked with the utility department on water connection from Caroline County. But the constraint right now will be on the sewer side. And so we have to go back and have some additional conversations, uh, with, um, the utility department if we were to expand. Uh, right now, we're projecting a, um, septic system. Um, and that, their drain field is located on the site plan. Uh, and we've been working with M&amp;M Soil Consultants out of Fredericksburg to, um, take a look at the septic system. So to answer your question succinctly, expansion, we have some constraints, but we do have land to expand.
Okay, and, um, because it goes back to the east, doesn't the land extend on my map? So it looks like this.
To the west.
And, uh,
To the west.
Tell me the square footage of the building again. I think you told me, but I didn't.
The building's going to be 9,600 square feet. Um, after looking at the needs of Head Start, uh, we went back and calculated, um, the requirements and we could save money, uh, for the program by squeezing it from 12,100 to 95, 9,600 square feet.
Okay, a couple more questions. Um, I know it's, is it Ms. Carter?
Carrington.
Carrington.
Oh, you mean the, the owner?
Uh, no.
Or my name?
Yeah, Ms. Carrington.
Carrington.
Yeah, I know you explained to us a little bit how funding works, uh, for this, but it's, it's all funded through, mainly through Rural Family Development Incorporated, Virginia Council of Churches?
It will be funded through a Head Start grant. We receive funds called the duration grant.
All of that.
Yes, that covers the cost of this project.
Okay. Um, the only current concern I have is the, you know, the entrance on 301, you know, VDOT's going to want some of those trees down and you're going to need, you know, because that's a little, I mean, uh, I hope the buses aren't going in that area, but that's a little bit, you know, the vision's impaired there for the drivers and, um, and then you're going to need turn lanes and stuff. I, I don't know if the funding covers that or not. A little bit precarious, that entrance.
We, um, we project the majority of the traffic to come through Brookwood, through that easement that Mr. uh, Mr. Pennington mentioned. Um, but we did think it was important because if you miss that entrance from, uh, to Brookwood, you have to go all the way down to New Baltimore and make a U-turn and come back.
Oh.
And so we thought it was important to have at least additional entrance off of 301 with some signage. Uh, but the main entrance for bus traffic will be coming through the Brookwood subdivision. Now, we do not control that, that road. Um, and so hopefully we'll be in relationship with that subdivision, uh, to be able to do that. But that's why that easement is there, uh, to utilize that entrance.
I would like to ask a question about the, uh, transportation of the children. I, I kind of got a little confused there. How do the children get to this facility? I, I was a little lost that it comes from the school and then it goes back to the, I, I'm sorry.
So currently, our children, um, with the three sites that we are, uh, we utilize now, our four-year-old children, um, take the bus transportation provided by the public school system. Our three-year-olds are transported by their parents. The facility, um, moving forward, we have been in conversation and requested to continue transportation services through Caroline County. Uh, we were told that they would not be able to do that. So we have money in our budget to purchase buses and are working on a transportation, are working on, uh, designing the routes to be able to transport our four-year-olds if possible. I mean, if necessary. We are hoping that we can, um, have further discussions with the public school to continue transportation services, but as of right now, we are preparing to provide that service ourselves.
Right now, the four-year-old children, they go, they go to the public school, get picked up by the bus, go to the public school, and then you pick them up and you bring them to your present location?
Well, right now, uh, of course, we are not in, we are virtual because of the pandemic. But during the regular school year, uh, the tran, the bus service goes directly to Lewis and Clark and Madison and drops the students off there. And then for Bowling Green, because we are not located in elementary school, our students are transported to the elementary school and then our Head Start staff meets them at Bowling Green and rides another bus, the short trip up the street to the School Board Office building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are y'all supplying all the meals at this facility?
We will be, yes. But currently, our meals are, uh, served by the count, the public school. The new facility will have a full kitchen and we are, um, going to be contracting with the vendor for our meal services.
One question? Ms. Carrington? I commend you and everyone associated with the Head Start program and what you're doing. I commend you for it.
Thank you.
Got a mission?
Yes, we do.
I support you in that.
Thank you.
I do have some concerns about what it's for. The planning department recommended that you utilize the interparcial, interparcial...
interfacial connection with Southern. And I'm reading from what has been provided to us. The applicant declined to do so.
That was a misunderstanding. In my email to Mr. Pennington, we did have some questions about the utilizing the entrance to Brookwood and how that would impact that community. We also kept the original entrance off of 301 as a secondary entrance to the, to the facility. But we did not decline. That was a misunderstanding.
Because I'll be quite honest with you, I have concerns about the entrance off of 301. God forbid anyone, at least of all a child, be injured or killed because we just have an entrance and an exit there without the proper lane. I know and understand human nature. They're going to take the shortest point from point A to point B. That's not going to be going through Brookwood. Just stating human nature. So I think that you're going to find that there is a lot more traffic at an entrance on 301 than you anticipate today.
Okay.
So that is a great concern. Safety issue. And I really would like to see the chairman, a VDOT finding on this. And if it is their recommendation that a deceleration, an acceleration lane, and a crossover be installed, then that's what I'm going to go with because I really have concerns about an entrance/exit on 301. Really good. But e- even if it's restricted solely to staff, you can put up all the signage you want. We have 55 mile an hour speed limit signs for 301. People drive 75, so they don't pay attention to signs. Some don't. And all we need is that one to not pay attention to them. Slow down schoolchildren. I wouldn't want it to be my child, your child, or anyone else's child. Those are my concerns.
We don't want that either. Health and safety is the main concern of Head Start, and we want to have the safest environment as possible.
And I don't want you to feel that I, you didn't have that as a concern as well.
I understand.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm also, as a commissioner, I'm also concerned about just going through Brookwood itself. Okay? That also bothers me because that's an additional burden on that roadway also. Okay? So I understand what you're saying about, you know, VDOT and the main road, but I'm also concerned about moving buses. I know we had always, in the planning commission, we had always established that we need a cross easement agreement. It was always established for, I don't know, as long as I was there, 20 years ago. But I, I'm also concerned about that. There are two different locations here. But one happens to be a very fast situation. And the other one is also a very slow situation. So I, I understand. I feel a little hesitant too about the roadways.
Just one follow-up, please, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Carrington, are you anticipating the full-size school buses as we see carrying public school children nowadays? Or are we talking about a, a smaller bus? If you have, if you know.
It's hard to, to say right now. I would, if I had to answer now, I would say the full-size buses. Typically, about 40 to 50% of our students are four-year-olds and transported by the buses. So yes, probably most likely the larger size buses, the full-size buses.
You're speaking buses plural and not saying.
Possibly, yes.
But just, just to remind the commissioner, this, this school is about 100 students, right?
Yes, 90, we're funded for 95.
We just talked about Belmont, which could, you know, that's another subdivision. Schools might be going in there. That's probably going to be closer to 800. Or if it's, you know, a middle, a middle school, you're talking about 1,000 or more. So this is a tiny school. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about the buses going through Brookwood as I am, you know, a concern with Route 301, as you said. So I think Brookwood would work out, but yeah. It would be good to look into some studies on 301. What, what you can and can't limit and, you know, what D, VDOT is. Mr. Pennington mentioned something earlier about what VDOT thought of.
If, if there is, VDOT provided their first round of comments, and the applicant provided a new site plan to address those comments. VDOT's only had it for approximately a week now, and so we haven't gotten official comments back from VDOT. But they, in a phone call, they have stated after looking at the new plan that if there is an entrance on 301, they will need a traffic study performed or turn lane warrants to find out if it needs a full-length right turn lane off of 301. There is no crossover there, so there wouldn't be a left turn lane. You would, coming from the south, you would have to go up to the Brookwood intersection, make a U-turn and come back down. But they have said that they would want a traffic analysis for turn lanes.
That would address the 301 situation.
So that's, that's the only thing I think that is a concern for me at this point. Just, I'm, you know, I need to see the VDOT study, and they haven't completed it yet, right?
It would be on the applicant to contract a company to do the traffic analysis. VDOT doesn't do it themselves. They review the traffic analysis that would be done by a third party.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing on SPX 0220. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? If so, please step to the podium. Is this a fight out here or what? Great, it looks like they're fighting. Please, ladies, one at a time.
My name is Reverend Mary Ann Glover. I'm the general minister of the Virginia Council of Churches. And just a little bit of history of the Virginia Council of Churches in Virginia. We represent 18 denominations, 36 judicatories, pre-COVID-19, 1.2 million members. I don't know what the numbers are now. We've had a great history of working with Head Start since 1969 in Virginia originally, on the eastern shore with two sites. And most recently, here in Caroline County in direct partnership with Caroline County Public Schools. That has been a, a great partnership down through the years. Deal with challenges, but still a great partnership because in any partnership, there will be challenges. Husband and wife, there are challenges. But we do hope and pray that our partnership can continue with the Caroline County Public Schools. We can look at new partnerships together. But before I continue, I would like to bring forward the Reverend Dr. Leo Whitaker, who is a product. He's the executive minister of Baptist General Convention in Virginia and a product of a Head Start program in eastern Virginia. Dr. Whitaker?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, and to the members of the Board of Supervisors for the wonderful area we call Caroline County. I hope and pray that my three minutes is not one is the same with Dr. Glover's minutes as I watch the clock. And so being, if that is the case, let me hasten to make my point. In 1964, when President Johnson started the Head Start program, I was four years old. And I was one of the first person at the TC at Irwin Elementary School in the Head Start program. Since that time, my academic trajectory has moved me as an honor student from Ferguson High School, a graduate of Howard University in 1984, Samuel D. Wick Proctor School of Theology in 1987. A four, three, five years of working with the Baptist General Convention of Virginia, 1,079 churches throughout the state with, which are, many of those states and many of those churches are part of Caroline County through our Metapreni Association. You've got the Milford Church and, and others that are part of what we do. And one of the great joys of the Head Start program is not only was I able to finish one master's degree, but two. And then finish my terminal degree simply because I had a nurturing environment that Head Start provided. There's an African proverb that simply says, as we celebrate these last closing days of African-American History Month, that it takes a village to raise a child. Well, the Head Start is a village that brings funds from the government to a locality where the needs of the kids are great and the demand of meeting those needs are insufficient. And as we partner with the school system in Caroline County, there are ways in which those monies help to make those dollars more meaningful for your county. In addition to that moment, it becomes an employer for the people who have degrees in education to come to this area, to receive a job, to provide the grace of nurturing care to children and new generations so that you don't just have one Dr. Leo Whitaker standing before you, but you have four, five, six, and seven. I, I do know the safety of neighborhoods and the schools coming to this site, a brand-new site with your new schools that are coming in and new population. It's a underserved community that those who are nurturing persons like Sister Michelle Carrington and Dr. Mary Ann Glover and the teachers who are part of this program, that they do a marvelous job in making sure that our children know that they can be anything they want to be. And so I solicit your support on behalf of the 1,079 churches of the Baptist General Convention, two of our associations that touches Caroline County, the Metapreni Baptist Association, as well as, as, as well as the Chickahominy Baptist Association. And so I'm delighted to say to you that Head Start works. And I'm here beyond as a preacher, a black preacher, speaking before my time is up. Thank you so very much for your time. And I do provide a letter that goes along with the statements that I just made.
I have more, but I'll stop just to be in compliance with your requirement. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishes to speak on this application?
Good evening, Chair and Board members. My name is Andrea Ross, and I'm the Director of Federal Programs for Caroline County Public Schools. One of my responsibilities is the oversight of our preschool programs. And with that comes collaboration with Rural Family Development Head Start. We are here this evening to express the school division's opposition to the RFD proposal and provide greater insight as to the vast benefits of our youngest learners receiving instructional and socially-emotional learning within their home school. Head Start emphasizes four points of connection with schools: family, child, program, and community. When these connections are strengthened, they facilitate an effective transition to kindergarten. During the course of the school day, preschool students benefit from a wide array of in-kind services such as art, music, physical education, and library, along with exposure to morning announcements, assemblies, and school-wide experiences. Students have the ability to interact with school counselors and other support staff as needed. Tending school within their home school allows our preschool students to become acclimated to the facilities, staff, routines, and daily procedures to ensure a seamless transition to kindergarten. Head Start staff are able to connect, interact with CCPS colleagues on a daily basis in regards to resources, information sharing, and just getting to know one another on a personal level, which ultimately contributes to higher collaboration. Additionally, quality of instruction is positively impacted when joint professional development is conducted and co-planning occurs between CCPS, VDOE, licensed educators, and Head Start staff. Over my two years working in Caroline County, we have strived for consistent communication and collaboration with RFD staff. While many attempts have been made with previous and current staff, information sharing has not always been reciprocated along with responsiveness to requests and timelines. For example, CCPS routine routinely invites RFD staff to participate in all Virginia preschool initiative, VPI parent and community meetings. However, the school division's multiple requests to have a CCPS staff member, myself, join their policy council meetings have remained unanswered. CCPS staff believes moving Head Start students off of our campus will create a challenge in accessing additional resources and staff collaboration along with creating longer bus rides for our children on the opposite side of the county. This would also minimize socialization with peers and limit interactions with kindergarten staff, classrooms, and activities. The opportunity for collaboration and communication among school and administrative staff would be more challenging since CCPS and RFD staff would be located in different buildings. CCPS is here tonight to advocate in the best interest of our youngest learners. We are committed to collaboration with RFD staff to ensure that our youngest learners have a safe, welcoming environment and quality learning experiences. This would be best facilitated with our children remaining in CCPS facilities and continued access to additional instructional and socially-emotional resources that are provided to all Caroline students. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. My name's Teresa Hicks, and I'm the principal at Madison Elementary. I've been an educator in Caroline County Public Schools for 30-plus years. I am here today to express my concerns with Rural Family Development's proposal to relocate all of their classrooms to another location, excuse me. When I heard of this proposal, my heart sank. The thought of our most vulnerable and youngest students not being a part of the school system is unimaginable. I was a part of the preschool team many years ago when we first began the partnership with Head Start. As a preschool teacher at the time, we worked together to meet the needs of all the students, regardless of what program they were in, assigned to during the school day. Teamwork and collaboration was at the forefront of our weekly team meetings in determining how best to provide the necessary skills for our students to be prepared for kindergarten. As I joined the administration team, I've experienced essential care and planning that is taken into consideration each summer to ensure that students attain additional opportunities such as music, PE, art, and library resources. Consequently, having students who participate in the Head Start program on-site helps to nurture the whole child and fosters a rich connection with our families. Students at MES, Head Start students at MES, have access to our building for meals, resources, school nurse, and special programs, and all other amenities ordered to our students. Students would lose those essential components that our schools offered should they be relocated off-site. We want to continue the collaboration with our building and Head Start. We've addressed the concerns of Head Start regarding our facility on a continuous basis. It is not the four walls that teach our students, but what occurs within those four walls that impacts academic success. Educating the young child has always been my passion, and to lose this population will impact our success of ensuring students are receiving an equitable education. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. I am Cynthia Brown. I'm the principal at Lewis and Clark Elementary here in Caroline County. I'm here today to express my concerns with the Rural Family Development proposal to relocate all of their classrooms to another location. For the last two years, we've been fortunate to have two Head Start classrooms at Lewis and Clark, one servicing three-year-olds and another one for four-year-olds. &amp; Clark, one servicing three-year-olds and another one for four-year-olds. Previously to that, we had just one classroom, which we've had for many years, and we would love to continue. Having the children here at their home-based school and with their peers that they see in the community each and every day is vital for their social-emotional development. It saddens me to hear that the RFD wants to separate the children from their home schools. Having the Head Start classrooms here in our school has allowed our students and our teachers to collaborate and communicate more effectively. With this collaboration among staff has allowed the students to transition easier into kindergarten, as we have seen through data across the years. Prior to COVID last spring, Lewis &amp; Clark preschool teachers and Head Start teachers planned and collaborated on a weekly basis. They organized field trips together and planned different activities. Our Head Start teachers and students have always been invited and involved in all our school activities, along with PTA activities that have been provided before and after school. The Head Start teachers and our students continuously collaborated for the best of our students. Two years ago, Lewis &amp; Clark and the Lewis &amp; Clark Head Start class were recognized from an outstanding award from the Smart Beginnings Organization for their outstanding partnership and collaboration, and we would love to see that continue. Moving the students to another location would not allow any of this to occur. The children at the age of five would then need to move to a new school, learn new faces and new procedures again. The staff wouldn't have the collaboration to discuss the needs of the students and to ensure the further success into kindergarten. I ask that you put children's needs first here. This is keeping them in their home-based school, who they're around each and every day, in a collaborative setting that yields many benefits for their growth and development. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Paige Carter, and I'm the Director of Special Education for CCPS. I'm also a resident of the Metapanay District. I would also like to say that I'm a huge fan of Head Start, having attended it myself in the mid-'70s. I'm here tonight to share my perspective regarding young children with disabilities. Head Start regulations require that a minimum of 10% of the enrollment be students with disabilities who are eligible for services under IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Public schools provide those services. This may be speech-language therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, or a number of other services, including specially-designed instruction by a licensed special education teacher. With Head Start located, excuse me, with Head Start located in buildings, it increases access to services that can be provided inclusively within the Head Start program. There is also an opportunity for frequent and ongoing collaboration between professionals that provide these services and the Head Start staff. Other services available in the elementary school are pre-referral intervention teams that support interventions for students who are struggling, not just students with disabilities. This may include consultation from a behavior specialist, a board-certified behavior analyst, math or reading specialist, and other services. Collaboration for students with disabilities will continue regardless of location, but a move off-site will limit immediate access to services and support that would be readily available if programs were on a school campus. I was an early childhood special education teacher here in Carolin for 12 years. I worked with Head Start and shared many great experiences with the students that we shared. The students knew their school, and the transition to kindergarten was smooth. It was also great to be able to run down the hall to observe a student or lend a hand for students that needed a little extra support that day. It's my hope that Head Start can remain in Carolin County Public Schools to increase inclusive opportunities for students with disabilities and ease access to needed services and supports. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, Board Chair and Commission members. I am Marcia Stevens, Chief Operations Officer of CCPS. It is the school division's belief that longstanding concerns with RFD's communication would be further aspirated by relocating off CCPS campuses. In November, RFD contacted me and briefly outlined exploration of two options: of building playgrounds on our properties or relocating three of their five classrooms to a location in the town of Bowling Green. RFD was given multiple opportunities to present and share their proposals with the Carolin County School Board, of which they have not taken advantage of. To further demonstrate the depth of this communication gap, Carolin County Public Schools only became aware of RFD's proposal for the special exception permit through the Planning Department Notification Memorandum to the schools for comment. CCPS had a meeting in June of 2019 in which licensing citations were mentioned during this meeting, and CCPS requested a copy of those concerns. The citations cited concerns with the entryway walkways at the Madison Learning College, a quarter-size hole in the wall, and an additional malt space required at the Madison Playground. All of those licensing concerns were addressed by CCPS, and repairs were made. At the meeting with RFD, at a meeting with RFD on July 13 of 2020, RFD mentioned some licensing concerns of the playground at the Bowling Green Elementary Site or the School Board Office. However, CCPS was never provided a copy of those specific licensing citations in order to take action on those items. As of today, we have not received copies of those citations, nor are there any maintenance requests of the concerns that were presented this evening. CCPS provides a tremendous amount of financial support and partnership with the Head Start program. We provide five classrooms and office space, storage space, on our campuses. Based on the recent appraisal for the fair market value lease of the space being provided is $37,000 annually, and we receive $7,200 in lease payments for the office space. CCPS also provides custodial and maintenance services, utilities, internet, transportation of the students, resource teachers for an annual cost of $106,000. In addition, there are several resources not included in the values previously spoken, including but not limited to the special education services, our parent resource center, gym and cafeteria space, custodial cleaning products, supplies for restrooms, access to employee training software, and training, training with the, amongst the staff, and professional development, and social-emotional resources. In support of Carolin's youngest learners, we are committed to continuing providing spacing and in-kind contributions to RFD while the Head Start program remains on our campuses. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Devers. I'm a Head Start teacher for Rural Family Development at our Lewis &amp; Clark location. Being at Lewis &amp; Clark, we have an advantage over the other Head Start classrooms. We definitely have a better facility for our children to grow than that of our other locations. At Lewis &amp; Clark, we have built a rapport with one of the preschool teachers. He makes sure that we are invited to assemblies, as well as other programs going on in the school. However, things get busy and people get sidetracked, so there have been times when Head Start doesn't get notified about these things happening until the morning of, causing our program to switch gears so our children are not left out. If it were not for that one fellow educator, Lewis &amp; Clark Head Start program would not benefit as much from being in the schools as we do now. While the rest of the staff greets us and is respectful towards us, they have, they are not the ones to include us in the extracurriculars. Our location at Madison Elementary is in a trailer outside of the school, causing our staff additional time to prepare children for the weather outside just to go eat breakfast and lunch on a daily basis. Additionally, they have to take additional time to prepare the kids when it's cold or raining, et cetera, to go to specials. Our Bowling Green location is located in the School Board Office. While these classrooms have, do not have to go outside to walk through the areas of the building, they are completely excluded from all school activities. There is no invite to assemblies or anything of the like. Even if they were included, we currently utilize Carolin County Public School transportation and would have to work it out with them for attendance. Head Start prides itself on being a Head Start family, and that's what we want, our family together. We want to be able to grow in all of our classrooms in a warm environment with heads, with other Head Start children and families. Head Start is a vital part of the community, offering resources to families of early learners. If the Head Start program had all of its classrooms housed in one facility, we would be able to plan our own assemblies, our own career day, our own family fun days, our own community helpers events, et cetera, without any of the students being left out. We would be able to have all of our classrooms experience education with firsthand experiences. As an educator myself, I am hopeful that CCPS would want nothing more for our program than for it to grow to its full potential. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Woodson. I'm the interim grant manager for Head Start program, and I would like to share a couple of letters of support that's coming from our teachers and our parents. Dear sir, madam, I, Nakia Rollins, am a current employee of Rural Family Development Incorporated Head Start program. I am submitting this letter to confirm my support of the Rural Family Developments Inc., RFD, obtaining its own facility to operate the Head Start program in her, here in the county. I am in support of the Rural Family Development Head Start program. As an employee of RFD, I have worked on all sites, but for two school years, I have worked at the Madison site, Monday through Friday. And the conditions we faced were far idea, were far from ideal from any classroom setting. Inside of the trailer, we all have shelves, tables, center areas, and seating areas. It never felt like enough space for 20 students and two adults, especially during naptime. And any kind of weather, the county saw fit for us to go to the school. We would have to go outdoors to take the students to and from the building multiple times a day. We had no walkie-talkie to be able to make contact with the, with the office from the playground in case of emergency. The trailer ramp has loose slats of wood and often causes stumbling, and the railings had a gap wide enough for the children to attempt to slide through. There was holes in the trailer walls, and that allowed for pests and rodents to build nests in tucked-away spaces and come into there, and come into as they please. There were cracks in the frame of the classroom doors, which allowed rain to fall down inside the classroom doors, soaking posters on the walls. There were cracks and pieces of missing, missing, missings on the floors, as a fuse box, a fuse box on the wall that does not close, and mildew growing in their vents. Students and staff will surely benefit from the newly facility because we deserve a clean, safe, and healthy environment for our students to learn, not only in aid in their learning experience, but it gives the staff a mind of knowing that they can keep everyone safe. In the years working in Madison, I have worked alongside two dedicated teachers with health and allergy concerns. They show up to work every day knowing that their health and potential was potentially at risk with being able to smell and smell the mildew walking through the classrooms. I am a, dear Planning Commission Chair and Board members, I am submitting this letter on behalf of Rural Family Development, and my time is running out, but I do want to share one letter from a parent. I, Bussor, parent of Redana and Ray, am currently a parent of Rural Family Development Incorporated. I am submitting a letter to confirm my support of the Rural Family Development Incorporated obtaining their own facility to operate their Head Start program here in Carolin County. And I have two letters of support from parents. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Brown, and I live on Devil's Three Jump Road. I'm a Head Start parent. My son is attending the program currently right now, and I want to speak in behalf of the program. I know that there are some issues with the entrance, and that's a main concern, but as far as the benefit to the children, right now, there's a great disparity depending on which facility the children are housed in. If we have one facility, all of the children will have the same resources, and it will bring our program into compliance with Head Start regulations. We want to make sure that at the end of the day, we are all complying with the federal law so that our program can continue to operate. If we do not fix the areas where we're out of compliance as far as the amount of space, particularly with COVID now, we actually need more space than what has even been mandated previously. Right now, our students are having difficulties because we can't come to the buildings, we already underspaced, we are not able to have certain safety precautions installed because of the disparities. We would like our program to be housed in one single facility to bring our program into complete compliance also. As far as the benefits that the students have, we are completely grateful to CCPS for what they provide, but those provisions are for all students, not just Head Start students. They are currently available to any student if they need any type of speech therapy, any type of special education. We all make great use of the Parent Resource Center and are very appreciative to that. The location is very close to here, it's centrally located for the county, and I think that as a community, we would be rather negligent if we turn down federal funding to house a new facility in our county. It's going to bring jobs to the county, it's going to benefit the whole community. We would like the community to be able to grow this program, but we're not going to be able to grow the program unless and until we are able to become independent of the county school system. That doesn't mean we won't work together, that doesn't mean there won't be collaboration. My children attended Bowling Green, they're not housed in the school system, and yet, every year, there were programs, Head Start has mandated, to create a specific program to ensure that the children transition successfully from preschool into the Education Department of the county. I don't think that's been an issue, it's never been a problem with my children integrating, I don't see why it would be a problem. Basically, to imply that they're not going to integrate successfully into kindergarten slams any child who is any, any preschool that is outside of the county school system, much less those who are at home and only come to school for kindergarten at the first time. So I kind of feel like that argument really doesn't have a whole lot of weight. That's just my personal opinion as a member of Head Start family. I hope that we can get this done.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Calverick. I'm the Superintendent of Carolin County Public Schools, and the absence of a scripted speech for you this evening, I'm going to speak from the heart. As an educator, I am passionate about both sides of this issue. We want all Carolin County Public Schools to have access to equitable resources. One thing that has really been poignant this evening and has struck a chord with me is the absence of communication. There are so many facets of this scenario that can be readily addressed by both parties coming to the table. And so I would ask for you to consider this evening either opposition to the request or a delay that would afford both Head Start Rural Family Development and Carolin County Public School to pull out calendars and to commit time and energy to having dialogue that is meaningful, purposeful, and action-oriented. The same funding that has been referenced from the duration grants can be utilized to build playgrounds, can be utilized to do an evaluation as to whether or not the Bowling Green campus at the School Board Office is now able to be transitioned over to Bowling Green Elementary School. None of these discussions have occurred because the communication has broken down. And I'm certain there is fault on both sides, so we're not here to point any fingers or to identify the root of that. But what I am here to say as the Division Leader for the School Division is there is so much good work that can happen, that can keep our students in their home schools where they flourish and they have the opportunity to embrace a familiar environment that helps them successfully transition into a kindergarten experience. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak on this application? Is there anyone out there that wishes to speak on this application? Here comes this gentleman who's been thinking about it.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Hicks. I work for Rural Family Head Start. I agree with both sides. There, there is an issue with the communication. For the last three years I've been employed there, there have been a lack of communication. There's been situations where children have been left and not retrieved by CCPS. The parents had to come out of wherever they were, leave work. With that, I, I understand that there's a lot going on. My issue, I think that with our own facility, that would take a little weight off of them, and it would allow us to show what we can really do. We've been here for many, many years, as everyone well knows. Some of, some of our speakers have even said that they've been part of Head Start. Head Start has been here a very long time. I don't think it's going anywhere, and I think it is our responsibility to give our children the opportunity to grow the way that they should. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else out there want to speak on this application? Let's one more time. Is there anyone else out there that wishes to speak on this application?
Brother Chair and all of the other members of the commission, I would just like to share that Rural Family Development Head Start is pursuing this because this came as a recommendation from the Office of Head Start. So the means of supporting Caroline County, Caroline County's growth, and Caroline's county advancement, not just for the children, but for the parents, the families, and the entire county. Many issues, many issues, but our focus need to be the empowerment and advancement of the children to become all that God has instilled within them to be. And at this time, I feel personally that that would come through, yes, communication, but to help the child advance and develop as Dr. Whittaker has done, as many others have done at this particular time. But if we don't and cannot meet the requirements of the standards of the Office of Head Start, we will be shut down. That's the potential. Just needed to share that with you. We do have issues. I forget what they call them, stuff we need to improve on because of locations, but if we don't come up to the standards of the Office of Head Start and comply with all of the standards, they could shut this program down. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. She actually went beyond what we were supposed to do, but that's okay. The applicant always has the opportunity to speak when we close the hearing then, okay? Do you want now, ma'am? You were given the opportunity to answer any of the questions since you already spoke. Did I say that correctly? Is there one, anyone else out there wish to speak? Ma'am, didn't you speak before?
Mr. Weaver, Mr. Weaver, can I clear that up real quick?
Excuse me?
She, that was the woman that spoke first and then gave up her time to the, the-
Pastor, right?
Um, with about a minute thirty left, and so that was the second time that she spoke, but that's not the applicant.
Oh, it's not the applicant?
That was not the applicant. No, she did speak twice, but that was not the applicant.
Okay, how do we turn this off, sir?
I think close it because the applicant can still speak.
I know the applicant-
Even if we close.
But, but what, what I've been told is she, she wasn't the applicant, even though she's spoken twice.
The applicant is right here. She has a mask that has-
Yeah.
How deep are those?
Yeah, that's why, I mean, go ahead. Yes, ma'am, come on.
But she can speak after the public hearing's closed too.
I know she can. That's what I was trying to do, was close the public hearing, and then if she wishes to speak, she could still speak. Okay, at this particular stage, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Smith, can you speak into the mic, please? We can't hear you.
I was looking at this chart, both, all three charts to find how we can try to help these people. Because I worked in the school system for thirty-eight years, and I know how important it is to try to get children in school as early as they can, get early education. Even though I know that 301 is a busy highway, that trucks and everything else. But I'm looking at where they have on this chart. So I have the one that represents highway. That goes over to the Brookwood Development Corporation. That line that comes from there to the center of the proposed entry is seventy-two feet. I think that's what I'm looking. Is that seventy-two feet?
A look. Where is this method?
That's right on, uh, this Monroe, this turnpike.
Yeah.
And I was looking at-
That says, you're right, it says seventy-two point nine five. That's been a property line.
Yeah. But I was looking at, is it possible that they're going to have what you call a runoff where you can put it aside before you take the turn and go into driveway?
That's, but that's not really our, our decision to make. That's what VDOT is going to tell them.
I understand that.
What else to do down there? I'm not saying you're, you're wrong. I'm just saying I would not be able to render that decision. That's why it was asked that an analysis, an analysis be made by VDOT to say, yes, they can come in a little sooner.
Yeah.
A little further back. I, I, that's all I could say.
And we also have a note at the high school that the sign that says thirty-five miles an hour. So would it be our responsibility to try to, to deal with this?
No, it would, it would be the applicant's-
The applicant has to do it themselves.
Has to get a traffic analysis that says, yes, you can put one over there, or maybe better putting it down further? I can't tell you that.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
No, you can't talk.
You know I'm going to say something because my doctorate's focused in education. So, you know, it became pretty obvious that we had two different philosophies, one sort of more public school and one a little bit towards private school. And in all my years of evaluating, working with kids, I thought that, that basically this is a, you know, preschool program, that three and four-year-olds did well in both programs, you know, whether it's more public school philosophy or more towards the Head Start, and this is sort of making it more of a, a private school-type philosophy. But I think the children would do well in, you know, either way, combined with the new facility. As a matter of fact, most preschool children do attend a private facility because there's not that many public schools that have preschool in Virginia. So I still would be in favor of this, but you know, I still would like to see VDOT's analysis of using the roadway that goes out on 301. I would like to see more, as our superintendent, that I would like to see more communication and maybe if everybody goes to their own corner, maybe they will, you know, calm things down a little bit, and there'll be a little bit more door open, doors open so that you can talk a little bit more about that.
Well, ma'am, you could, you could-
In the meantime, I think the children would get a, a good education in either place.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, is it time for my rebuttal? Thank you. Am I limited to three minutes as well?
Probably.
No, she's an applicant.
Okay. That's it, ma'am. That's what they told me.
Okay.
Given that, she do-
Thank you for the opportunity to respond to the comments. I want to start by sharing a little bit of history since I have been with Rural Family Development and my experience. I am a former Head Start parent. I have worked for Head Start since nineteen ninety-eight. And I've seen Head Start in various settings. The majority of my experience has been with Head Start operating in standalone programs, three to be exact. I also have experience working in a program that was run by the school system prior to me coming on board in the summer of twenty twenty to Rural Family Development. All programs have their challenges, but I think the, the most, in my experience in Head Start, the most common misconception is that Head Start is either daycare or Head Start is not able to prepare children as well as the public school setting, and both are false. The Head Start performance standards, as I stated before, have specific regulations that govern every part of the Head Start program. Head Start is not under the Department of Education. We are under the Department of Health and Human Services because the goal of Head Start is to treat and support the entire family, not just the children that we serve. All of the resources that were named by the Caroline County School staff, although they have, some of our children have been able to utilize those resources, all of those are, have not, all of them have not, but they are also not mandates for Head Start. Those mandates that were named are mandates for the public school system, not the Head Start program. We are mandated to use proven curriculums that support the learning of our children. Our classroom daily schedules have incorporate those elements that were named to include art, to include reading, resources, to encourage early literacy and language, to include gross motor activities through outdoor play. And we address those things during our daily classroom schedule, regardless of if we are run by the school district, a standalone program, a church, a community action agency, those things remain, and our students get those services regardless. We are also mandated to have family services staff who must create community partnerships to address the whole family. That includes health and nutrition. That includes social emotional support. That includes if our families come to us and say that they are in need of support around housing, resources, and utilities, we have to work with our community to address those needs and help those families. That is the foundation of Head Start, to support the entire family in addition to preparing our children for kindergarten. We have taken a lot of time. This project, Dr. Calverick, I believe it was, mentioned a possibility of a delay in this application process. However, our Head Start and former Head Start director initiated this process back in two thousand eighteen. We have worked very hard to get to the point where we are today. When I came into this program in June, in July of this year, after the last director left, we were under the gun because we had a deadline to complete this project by November thirtieth of two thousand twenty. We focus on finding an adequate location for our new facility so that we would not lose this funding. We have spent many long nights, weekends, meetings on Sundays to get this project to where it is now. And we have a specific application through the federal government that we had to complete outlining this location. We looked at several different locations, and this project is not new to Caroline County Public Schools. We have emails, communication, where the school staff acknowledged, knowing that we were looking for a new site. However, I think that as was stated before, there has been a lack of communication, and I will say that that goes both ways and falls under the pressure of all the responsibilities that both administrations have to run their program. There have been requests made from me to, about communicating issues as recently as COVID cases and school closures, and I have not had, been given that information. Without the support of my teaching team, who also have students enrolled in Caroline Counties, sharing information and notifications that come out about school closings, I would not know about that despite my request to be added to those lists. So the communication breakdown goes both sides, and as we shared early, we know that we have to partner with our public school system. We intend to work hard to improve the communication efforts and partner, but the feeling that I have since we've been here is that they want to have control over the, over our Head Start program. And when that control is not given, then we receive, we have apprehension. I do want to share in response to all of the things that have been said, that regardless of the health and safety issues that we have, because we have communicated those concerns, and so has our previous director, and efforts have been made to come, to correct some of those challenges, but some of those things are not able to be corrected. We cannot correct the space that we have, and we have been told on multiple occasions that there was no additional space available to our program. We cannot change the size of the classrooms at Bowling Green. We cannot change the size of the trailer. And regardless of any other efforts, that impacts our funded enrollment. If we do not meet our funded enrollment, it means decreased funding for our program. It means that we are able to serve less children than we anticipate or that we intend to and would like to, and it means that those families miss out on services. Our space also does not allow for us to have events on-site for our families. We have had to, in the past, reach out to the- Uh, we have had to in the past reach out to the library to have, um, events. We've even had a policy council meeting at our Richmond office because no space was available to have it here in Caroline County. So all of these things impact us and the decision before you. We ask that you take a look, a comprehensive look at our program and what we offer to families and the need for our families and children and staff to be in one location healthy where we can support each other, where they can work together more closely, where we can coordinate services to our families, um, under one roof. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity tonight. And I do want to add regarding the, um, entrance of a 301 for the transportation, we left that entrance there because we felt like there would be, there may be too much traffic coming through Brookwood, but if, uh, we are open to not utilizing the 301 entrance, if the Brookwood entrance, um, provides adequate, um, entrance and exit for our program. Thank you. That's all I have.
Should they have comments? Any more comments for the chairman?
Chairman, I'm a opponent of, uh, leaving children in, uh, the mainstream. I've seen a lot of benefits for children here. Been there and opposite with, um, private schools and that's the life of that. To me, I feel like they're going from mainstream to isolation. I would like to see the parties get together and discuss this and figure out a way to, to utilize what, what they have without spending an enormous amount of money to, to me, it won't, it won't be that much benefit.
Understood. Anybody else have an opinion? Mr. Schwartz?
Mr. Chairman, I've read the letters. I've listened to all of the comments here tonight. I'm also aware that the Board of Supervisors, County Public School System, and RFD are aware of the communication problem. This is nothing new. We are being pulled in to that disagreement, as it were. I found one thing, I listen to words and something that, that Mrs. Carrington said in her statement is that they cannot get permission, uh, for school meetings. Well, I'm hoping that what she meant was accommodation because I believe the school board or, or in the public, uh, public school system would do everything they could to accommodate rather than grant permission. It seems it just stuck out to me, but these are adults. The ultimate goal of both sides of this coin are the children. They need to stop their bickering and do what's right for the children. And I don't feel that taking and isolating them into a separate facility is what's in the best interest of the children. Now, are we to decide a zoning issue or an educational issue?
Well, I think that's a problem, okay? Because not being an educator, um, I listen to both sides and I don't think there's any animosity on either one of their sides except they're not getting together to talk to see if this issue can be resolved. So under normal circumstances, I would say, all right, um, let us, uh, let us delay this for another 30 days, defer it for another 30 days, but do we really believe that in 30 days, they're going to be able to accomplish anything?
No, sir. I, I think we need to find out about the traffic safety issue. Uh, it is paramount to me, they're, they're going to squabble. They're, they're going to have their differences and there's nothing wrong with having a difference of opinion, but, uh, I think we need to get the, uh, traffic issue resolved first. That's the paramount issue as far as I'm concerned.
And, and I don't know if y'all heard me, but I'd, I'd like to repeat this again. Most children that go to a preschool program, the preschool program is not connected to the public school. It just happens to be in Caroline County and it is in some other place, but most children are not. And we're only, you know, talking about 100 children within this county, you know, of the age of three, four preschool age be, being connected. So, and I'll state again, I think, you know, that both types of education are great. Um, but I, I think it would be fine to have a preschool in a separate location, you know, based on my opinion, which I feel is professional, but you know, because that, that was, you know, where my, um,
Area of expertise.
Yeah. One of my areas of expertise.
Area of expertise.
Yeah. Um, and if they are separated for a while, that may allow things to cool down a little bit and there may be more communication. Sometimes when you're in two separate rooms, you can communicate better than having to live in the same room. Uh, but like you said, you know, Mr. Schwartz, I still, uh, would like to see a traffic study where 301 is concerned.
So then I would ask for motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please. Whereas general welfare and good zoning practice warrants, I move to defer SPEX 022020, uh, for the rural family development Head Start to the next meeting for further discussion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Go in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. It's been a long night, but it has for us too.
Good points made by everyone.
You got the, uh, you got my book, Bob?
Yes, sir.
All right, here we go. All right, now we're going to do this one. Hi, I'd like to open a public hearing for FY 22 slash 26 capital improvement program. Staff report, please, Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, your last public hearing tonight is the annual public hearing, uh, in this case is the FY 22 to FY 26 capital improvements program for the county. Uh, as the commission is aware, this is an annual exercise that we go through, um, to where we, uh, look at the, uh, capital, uh, improvement needs for the departments and agencies in the county. It is intended to be a five-year review, though realistically, most of the focus of the CIP is on the first year or two of the process. In, in particular, the first year is the capital budget, which is the, the budgeting, uh, process that we are currently going through for the next fiscal year. The CIP process is designed to, to, um, basically allocate limited resources that, that the governing body has, uh, and identify, uh, those improvements to the various, uh, departments and agencies, uh, and allocate those limited resources in the best manner that we can. You have a large set of documents. I would suggest that you focus on the spreadsheet, uh, which actually has the requests for each department and agency. The, the other materials are really the support materials, um, uh, that, that give more, uh, descriptive information to, uh, the projects that are identified in the spreadsheet. You'll see on that spreadsheet, all the, uh, uh, departments and agencies that have, uh, submitted CIP requests. Uh, you also will see next to each fiscal year, the county administrator's recommendation. The county administrator has, uh, as part of his budgeting process for this year, has, has looked at the available funds, uh, looked at the, um, uh, requests and provided you his recommendation, uh, for, uh, funding for the various projects, uh, looking at, at, at the needs of all departments and agencies. Briefly, uh, in FY 22, uh, the, his recommendation is 230, uh, just over 231,000 to the sheriff's office, uh, for, uh, new vehicles, uh, 960,000 to the, uh, Department of Fire and Rescue, uh, for new fire, uh, and EMS apparatus, about $350,000 to Public Works and Public Utilities, uh, for, uh, equipment and/or, uh, planning studies, uh, or water supply studies, uh, for the utilities department. Um, a total of about 899,000 to the schools, which is broken up into school infrastructure, school board equipment, as well as transportation. And that transportation would be the purchase, uh, of, of school buses, uh, as part of the ongoing, uh, fleet maintenance, uh, for the school buses. That's it in terms of my presentation. If you have any questions, I would be more than, uh, happy to answer those for you. Um, we pared down the process over the years, um, and, and I think that, that paring down has continued, um, and, um, where you now have the county administrator's recommendations ahead of time.
Well, I liked page one better than the other pages because page one has the header.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, we got it as a PDF, so we couldn't massage the spreadsheet, uh, to make it a little more user friendly for you, but, uh, we'll, we'll try to, uh, clean that up next year.
Uh, that's why I, I kind of did my own marking. But I think I got it right. It's giving people, a lot of people what they asked for this year for clothes. Some of it is cut down, but.
I mean, realistically, some projects get moved out. Certain larger, uh, dollar projects such as some of the parks and rec, uh, requests, uh, get moved out. Um, and unfortunately, sometimes they get moved out for, you know, a, a number of cycles just because of the, um, um, available funding, uh, to, to, to do those projects.
Did, um, Mr. Fincham, do you know, I mean, last year, we had the school group to come in, remember, the public school group? Did we get, because I called my school board members and spoke with him and, uh, so did, I mean, this was kind of a down year. Did we get a lot of that repairs and stuff done?
Um, actually, you have school system representatives here tonight, so I think you can, uh, ask them the question of, of, of how, um, successful they have been.
You know I booked Mr. Taylor.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I would, I would.
He would have called me if it hadn't gone well.
Well.
But it was commendable that the students came in and told us their perspective and learned how the government, the local government ran. So I'm hoping that, yeah, most of those repairs were made. I mean, we couldn't afford a lot of big ticket items, but yeah, it's a fix thing. We had a year where we were, uh, partially closed at least, and some of the repairs maybe could have been done.
Yeah, and, and the school board, uh, and, and board supervisors, um, have been talking about, uh, uh, school needs and, and I think the school system officials will update you on that tonight.
Like, no, we got a new wrestling match. That was in bad shape. But that, that was at the high school level.
They had the one in the trailer.
I think they tried, that, uh, yeah, but to start on the, my understanding.
Right. Yeah, I think I'm going to, I'm going to open up the public hearing, guys. Okay? Going to open the public hearing on FY 22, 26 capital improvement programs. I'll open it at this time. Anybody wish to speak, please step forward.
My name is Paul Heiser. I am the athletic director at Caroline High School. Uh, right now, you guys are going to receive some information on two items that have been lingering on our CIP request for quite some time. Uh, that will be a turf field for our stadium and also a multipurpose athletic facility that would benefit cheer, wrestling, and several other programs. We have some student athletes, coaches, and parents here this evening that will touch on some of the bullet points that I've just provided you with. I'm going to use my time to talk about two real situations that arose just this week in regards to both of these projects. One Monday, it was a little bit misty outside, about 40 degrees. We had, uh, generally two hours, hours scheduled for the practices. We had to cut cheer short on the back end. They practiced for an hour in our red gym and we cut them short. At that point in time, we brought in our field hockey team and they practiced in the gym for the second hour where cheer would have had that gym, gym time. While that's going on, in the corner of the red gym, we have mats on the floor and up against the wall, we have our shot putters in there practicing with an indoor shot put throwing simultaneously to cheer and field hockey practice. We've taken an old high jump mat and put it into the lobby area of the Blanton Gymnasium, which is our new gymnasium. We have high jumpers practicing in the gym lobby. In the Blanton Gym, we have two volleyball teams practicing. We are not able to use the old lobby space outside of our old gym. We were trying to keep that area quiet because we had a Virginia High School League, uh, play presentation, the drama presentation going on in our auditorium. While that is all going on inside and, and in that wing of the school, we have football practice going on outside. So we have a ton of stuff going on every afternoon at that high school. Lots of kids doing lots of activities. The other thing that happened this week is our football game that was supposed to be at home on Monday night was moved to Cortland High School to take advantage of their turf field. Now, with the condensed Virginia High School League calendar this year, we only have three home games for our varsity team. We lost one of them due to field conditions. All of the rain, sleet, snow, and so on, and cold temperatures over the past several weeks, our field is not playable. So we had to, to move one of our three home games to another county to take advantage of their turf field. Uh, we need this field. We need it for practice space. We have. We have teams that practice at the park because we don't have adequate practice space on campus. This field will provide daily practice space to field hockey or soccer teams with boys, girls, junior varsity, and varsity, and also our football programs. So I appreciate your time this evening. I hope you'll look at the list. And like I said, we have several other people that would like to speak on these. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Swan. I'm the head wrestling coach for Caroline. I live in the Reedy Church District. I say head wrestling coach for Caroline because I represent the high school, yes, but I also speak for the middle school and the youth wrestling in general for Caroline. I am a part of the community since 2006. I've coached wrestling in Caroline for the past 11 years. In the last 11 years, we built a successful wrestling program that has included a state champion, six state placers, 18 state qualifiers, and numerous district and region champs. We have done that despite not having adequate facilities. I'm here to support the school systems, CIP requests to build a multipurpose space that would finally get wrestling at home. The VHSL has done away with out-of-season practice rules for most part. The direct effect is that pretty much every team at the high school level holds some sort of practice year round. This proposed facility would improve the ability of the high school to provide practice space for our schools desperately need. For the past two seasons, we practice at the YMCA and I'm very grateful for their willingness to work with us. We still utilize a trailer at high school as well because of the disadvantages of you using the YMCA full-time. There is many reasons why this is not a great solution, but the biggest is the safety and practice time. At the high school, we have a full-time trainer. When we're at the YMCA, we do not access to that added safety benefit. Practice time is significantly impacted because most of our athletes rely on bus transportation to get to school and athletic practices. I'm going to have to shorten this. All right. Trying to grow in the wrestling program, we don't have adequate space for the middle school. We don't have adequate space for the high school. I would love to add Pee-wee programs as well, but we just do not have the space for. Without some sort of improvement, we're at a stagnant position where we are and we can't continue to grow our program. Thank you very much.
My name is Trevor View and I'm from the Mapanai District. And I just completed my last season as a Caroline wrestler. Wrestlers are a unique group. We work out and watch our diet all season, so we make weight prior to the match. We roll around on the mat with someone we don't know, but who also identifies as a wrestler. We will exchange sweat, maybe some blood, all while trying to take our opponent to their physical or mental limit. Then when the match is over, after six minutes of grueling man-o-man-o-sport, we shake hands, sometimes hug, shake our opponent's coach's hand, and then sometimes in victory and sometimes in defeat, go back and rejoin our team. I'm convinced that the mental and physical rigors of the sport are unmatched by any other high school sport. My teammates recognize this too. No one wrestler truly wrestles alone. His or her teammates are at the edge of the mat cheering them on and offering encouragement and advice to help them get through the match. Wrestling isn't easy and it isn't for everyone. It isn't even for every athlete, but it is for some. For some, it's what keeps them coming to school and it's what keeps them out of trouble. It's what builds character and teaches them how to win humbly and more importantly, how to lose graciously. It's time that we come alongside a wrestling program to support it with a facility that is worthy worthy of the effort and passion put forth by the kids and coaches. We need space that is large enough to accommodate a growing program. We need space that will reduce the likelihood of injury. We need space we can call our own. We were privileged to use the YMCA this year. Setting up and taking down mats daily and sharing space with the rest of the community isn't ideal, but we were thankful the YMCA helped us have a season. After the regular season was over, a few of us worked out in our old trailer at the high school to prepare us for states. I remember coming home after my last day of practice from my nothing but disappointing season and was satisfied because I got to finish it in the place where so many hours were spent working until I physically and mentally couldn't push myself anymore. Don't underestimate the impact of a place that you can call home, even if that home is grossly inadequate. I'll leave you with this parallel. Henry Blackaby in his book, Experiencing God, encourages Christians to look at where God is working and join him in that work. I encourage you to look at the recent successes of the wrestling program. It has grown tremendously over the past few years and produced a state champion. It's time we come alongside this program and join us in our successes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Neely Ryan and I'm one of the boys soccer coaches here at Caroline High School. This is Cyrus Ryan. He is one of the players. I am going to read three different things off from our head coach, Brian White, and our other coach, John O'Rawlin, oh, not John Rawlins, Swindells, sorry. And unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight because they were able to get their second dose of the vaccine yesterday and it hit them really hard today, so. Which, we're all lucky that we actually got to do that, right? So this is something that Cyrus wrote that he won't read, so I'm reading it for him. He said, "For the longest time, our Caroline County teams have had to suffer and deal with what comes with the harsher conditions of our home field. There are bumps and cracks and it's probably one of the worst fields we've seen throughout all of the counties that we've visited and played games with. We need a new turf field, not only for our boys soccer team, but for the multiple other teams who use this field. Boys football, girls soccer, field hockey, and not to mention the countless other events we have on that field. A turf field would be better for us now, and in the long run, it would help around 50% of the sports at our high school to have much better conditions than we have seen in the years. I can't speak for the other teams, but our high school boys don't even have a field to practice on as, as of last season, so we have to find small places and spaces to make our program work. A new turf field would be beneficial for all these teams and the future of Caroline sports to come. We can keep putting this off, but it only makes it more difficult for every person and their families to have the sport, sporting seasons that they deserve. A turf field is what Caroline needs. It will help all these groups and will also make cleanup and management of the field easier than it's ever been. The money spent will be well worth the use. We will get out of it and save us money that we spent now on maintenance and upkeep. It's the best option for Caroline right now and would make for a great field for all of us to call our home. Thank you." This is from Coach Brian Wright. He's the head coach of the boys soccer program. He says, "The Caroline High School athlete fields are long overdue for a refresh and the best place to start is to replace the grass in the Caroline Stadium with turf. Our practice fields have never been in satisfactory condition to practice on and upgrading our game field to a durable surface would allow us to use the field for both practice and games. Currently, the practice field behind the school where soccer and football are supposed to practice is uphill at one end and in a, and is in full ruts, bumps, cracks, and grooves. As a coach, practice is what allows for sports teams to improve and if we don't have a satisfactory surface for our sports teams to practice on, our programs simply can't improve any more than they already have. Having competitive sports teams in the county can build a lot of pride in the community and I think we want our Caroline kids to enter the adult world with confidence in their abilities, not feel like they don't measure up because teams in other counties dominate us. By putting our kids at a disadvantage as compared to the peers and other schools and teams and fields, I feel we are sending a message that we don't care about their success or failure. As a coach, I care less about having a nice game field than I do about having a good practice surface because that's where we spend the majority of our time getting ready for games. But upgrading our game field to a turf game field would allow us to use it for daily practices and would kill two birds with one stone. It is a fact that turf holds up far better than grass and can be practiced and played on in all weather. So for now, it seems that the most cost-effective way to remedy our practice and game field disadvantages is to upgrade our stadium field to turf so it can be used for both." That's Coach Brian Wright. Then the last, can I still go or no? Even though I'm reading for three people? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kendall Jackson and I am a senior at Caroline High School. I've been blessed to have the opportunity to play football for Caroline High School for all four years. Over my four years of playing, I know that our football field isn't the best. Once we get into the season, our field turns into nothing but mud and dirt. And with us sharing the field with sports like soccer and field hockey, our field gets a lot of wear and tear each year. And with that wear and tear, it affects our athletes and, it affects our athletes in a major way on the field. We had our first game of the season this past Tuesday and we were looking forward to our first game after almost over 400 days at our home stadium. But due to the condition of our field, it couldn't happen. And with us only having six games this season and only three home games, we really only have two home games where we get to have, where we get to play on our own field. And with all this being said, it would be great to have an artificial turf, not only for the football team, but for every sports team that uses the football field to host games and for the future and upcoming athletes of Caroline. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Bassoon and I'm a freshman at Caroline High School. I have attended Caroline Public Schools since kindergarten. I started playing football in the seventh grade. I'm so excited to be a part of Caroline High School Football Team. We have a great program and even better coaches. I have learned so much already this season. I am here this evening to ask the board to consider funding the school board with the funds needed to install an artificial turf football field at Caroline High School. Most and half the schools in the Battlefield District already have installed turf fields. Most schools north of Spotsy and Henrico County have turf fields too. All nine schools in the Henrico will have turf fields by the end of this year. We have not been able at all to practice this year because of the weather and the field conditions. If we had a turf field, it'd be a lot easier to practice and prepare for our games on the actual field. It would also provide additional practice space for numbers, for a number of Caroline High School teams. We had a perfect example of why we need our own turf field this week. We were unable to play our first home game at the home, at home because of our field conditions due to snow and rain. We had to play at Cortland to use our turf field. Caroline High School has a great football team and is going in a very positive direction. Please consider funding the turf field so our program can continue to grow and improve. Thank you for your time.
My name is Dr. Monroe. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Caroline County Public Schools. Unlike the big boss, I was too tall to play basketball, so I wrestled. I wrestled at Lock Haven University, which is called Mad Town, USA. When I was at Lock Haven, we lost to Penn State by one point. We were, we were a Division One school with, for wrestling only. Folks, I'm gonna tell you right now, please do not look at these children as if they're children. Dr. Horton, this is about life or death. I went to Hermitage High School. My high school coach went to Slipper Rock University. We had a stereo system. We had things on the wall called Berts. They were statues on the wall that we drilled with because they were cemented to the wall. I was the first wrestler at Hermitage High School to win 100 matches. My name is still on the wall of that wrestling room. That room has pads all the way around it. And the room broke community because my brother went to John, went to Thomas Jefferson. I pinned him in nine seconds. He got up, he wanted to fight me. My wrestling coach said, "You know what, son? You got passion. Why don't you come work out with us over at Hermitage High School? We have a wrestling room and we invite everybody to be a part of our wrestling family." Because when we compete against each other, we become brothers. My brother is my brother because he didn't have a mom or dad. He lived with his grandmother. The following year, his grandmother died. So he would come to my house every weekend because wrestling is a lifestyle. You don't just wrestle during the season. I wrestled freestyle in the spring, wrestled Greco-Roman in the summer, freestyle in the summer, and I wrestled in the fall. I wanted to play football, but my coach said, "Herbie, you'll break your legs out there." So I just want to let you to know wrestling got me to college. Then I went to North Allegheny High School. 1991, I worked the football games where North Allegheny had turf in 1991. I called home and said, "Man, we got, these kids got turf up here." You know, my friends told me back in Richmond? They said, "Those rich white kids get all of that stuff." Now, as Assistant Superintendent, I oversee equity, diversity, and inclusion. We talk about 11, a leveled playing field is what we want to give our kids, right? Well, you know, it took 30 years for my daughter's high school. My daughter goes to Glen Allen. This young man right here is right. It took 30 years for Henrico to wake up and smell of coffee. So I'm going to ask all of you to stop playing games with these kids and let's do something in this county. Because it's 10 o'clock at night and I need to be home with my children, but I love this county. This county is going to get everything I got and I'm going to ask the people who are from here's to give as much as us come here as a given for these kids. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair and Commission Members. I do not have a prepared speech, but I would like to answer Ms. Horton's question as the Chief Financial Officer for Caroline County Public Schools. For FY 20, our CIP was funded for five school buses, $25,000 for staff computers, $25,000 for classroom technology, $40,000 for our storage area network, $20,000 for our voice-over IP phone storage, $50,000 for a tow vehicle that is multipurpose for our maintenance and our band, and $100,000 to replace our maintenance vehicles and student transport vehicles. As you can see, based on the CIP approval this year, none of our athletic or facility request in the FY 20 CIP request was funded. However, we are very blessed that we were offered appropriation of our carryover funds from FY 18, FY 19, and $182,000 of our $1.9 million remaining due to over receiving additional state fundings than what we had budgeted in FY 20 during the pandemic and also with savings for the COVID year in the shutdown. So we were appropriated on February 9th, 2021, 1.2 million of those funds of our leftover carryover funds from those years. Of that, we were able and very gracious to get funding to be able to support the compliance of our stadium, of our stadium light replacements, of our bleachers at CMS, a replacement dump truck, upgrades to our gym lighting, windows for our ANEC building, and roof repairs, as well as work on our CMS practice track. In addition, the county is working in partnership with us on our softball field repairs. So we have $1.7 million remaining of our carryover that we have had meetings with the board supervisors, and we are hoping in the future that we would be able to fund additional CIP projects to increase or improve our facilities as we need. We will continue to have those meetings. We've had several so far. And that is the update on our FY '20 CIP funding. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak at this application?
I have a prepared statement this time. Um, good evening. My name is Keith Edwards, and I live in the Mattapanine District. I am the Technology Support Manager for the Caroline County Public School System, as well as a parent of two mighty Mustangs of the Madison Elementary School. I come before you tonight to garner your support for the CIP request for the replacement of classroom technologies in the amount of $50,000. I could tell you firsthand the importance of regular replacement cycle for classroom technology. Classroom technology encompasses a number of different devices, such as wall-mounted televisions, interactive whiteboards, and projector systems for the classrooms. These tools are used by the teachers to aid in providing high-quality instruction and prepare our students for an ever-changing 21st century society. When used in classrooms with fidelity and where necessary, our students are truly expanding their knowledge and application of our five Cs of education. Regrettably, classroom technologies have a very fixed lifespan. When they reach their expiration, classrooms can begin to regress in the areas of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creative thinking. Additionally, in order to lessen the burden on larger costs, classroom technologies are typically placed on a refresh cycle. This implies that a fixed number of technologies are replaced at each cycle. Without regular replacement, more of these devices break down, lose support, and become excessively expensive to maintain in the long term. In closing, I urge the board to fully fund the CIP request for replacement classroom technology, thus avoiding these higher end-of-life costs and keeping our teachers moving forward and embracing with confidence that they are empowering our students to become the next generation of learners, thinkers, and leaders. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes to speak on this application at this time? Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this application at this time? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Michael, next time, don't cut us off at this point.
The, um... Mr. Fincham, the stadium turf is a million. Is that what I'm reading? But it didn't get funded this year.
The county administrator has not recommended funding this year. You know, you could forward your recommendation to the board, and if you wanted to prioritize some other items that you would want them to look at if funding was available, that you could do that. Or you could actually recommend that an item be included aside from the county administrator's recommendation. This is still the recommendation he's taking to the board, so you would be making a recommendation from the commission that the board look at including something else.
I know. We don't know if we have, uh... Yeah, I mean, I think it's always great to hear from these athletes. And you know what? I don't think the other counties dominate y'all. I think y'all dominate them. You're working with a lot less equipment than them. And, you know, I see athletes go out all the time from Caroline County. And also academically, the students are doing great. You know, we have about 30,000 people in our county. That's our tax base. Whereas Pennsylvania has been close to 200,000 now, and I believe Stafford has over 200,000. But, um... I would like to see a way to get, um... some of this in. I don't know that we could do a million in one big swoop, but it would be nice to all to, uh...
Well, then you...
Think about for the future.
Then you get into the thing, Mike, with the wrestling.
I know. The wrestling mat needs replaced.
I can remember when... I remember back then when they had that old trailer, okay? And we went over there and we took a look at it, and the guys were just primed and then... I mean, it was only so long that you can put education, the education system, above athletes and getting some recreation, you know? And some of those young gentlemen said the right thing. You build a reputation so that we have pride. Now, I guess, I mean, I don't know. I guess the only thing is really, you know, if we're gonna make recommendations to the board, that this is the time to make it because otherwise, this is going in the way it is.
Well, I will go back to speak to the supervisor. I'm from the Port Royal District, so I will be speaking to her about it, and I will go back to speak to our school board representative, which is Mr. Taylor. You know, see if we can keep improving on these things. You know, even though we have much smaller tax base than counties to our north, but I would like to see some of these things happen. Sometimes... I mean... It'd be nice if Tiger Woods liked us, you know? I think he could spare an extra million.
I do, well, I do feel the same way.
Yeah, sometimes you can get money from private source. You know, brainstorm a little bit.
I don't see why we can't make recommendations.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether we think the money is there or not, it's for the board to decide.
Right, right.
I'd like to see the turf and the wrestling both recommended for approval.
I mean, this is not a question-and-answer session, but this mat is the same as it was last year? Okay, I see everybody nodding yes.
Can't be the same. It's gotta be worse.
Mr. Fincham. Mr. Fincham, can we do those kind of things? I mean, I realize that everything here is in beautiful color in it, but can, if, if we as a group feel that we would like board supervisors to analyze the turf field and the wrestling building, can we not make those recommendations?
Yes, sir. You can add that to your recommendation.
Well...
That would be a start. You gotta start somewhere.
I'll listen to the rest of you. I mean, that's kind of the way I feel about it.
I concur with your whole argument.
I mean, with some, 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 sometimes, you know, when it's part of the school, then they think, oh, the school's the only one that's interested. But we're, we're very concerned about our county. We work very, very hard as commissioners to do the best we can. And I think that we should be able to say to the board supervisors that we would like these two items added to this program. How do we do that?
Or make a recommendation for evaluations? Is that what you said?
Either way, you can specifically, in your motion, recommend that those two items be added to the CIP? Or you can ask that if there's any extra funding, that it be put towards those items, either way.
Is a school still the biggest part of the county budget? I mean, it was a major part.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't want to answer that.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um... I don't see the mat on here. Is it on here?
No, but it goes to the building.
I think that was part of the building.
Yeah, it's part of the building.
Building automation upgrade?
No, the, um... Wrestling facility slash fieldhouse.
Okay.
$200,000. Eight, four, $250,000. I think I would like to, I'd like to send it on to the woodwork recommendation. Michelle, what do you think?
Yeah.
So nothing's been awarded for either.
No, no. So how do we do this, Mr. Fincham? I would like this to be added.
Make a motion with the inclusion of those two items. And I'm assuming you're including them in the FY '22 request.
Carol, you want to make the motion?
So... Okay, so FY '22, you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
I'm reading your minds.
Yeah. And also, um, I mean, honestly, would I be able to afford this in one big...
But we don't know them. But you know what, Carol? We hopefully...
Well, what I'm thinking...
We'll still be around next year, Carol.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any way money can be moved around and saved.
Let's not go down so far.
Um, I, I don't, I think that's a board discussion. I don't think that's, that's
Right, agreed.
our discussion at this level.
Bob, you want to make a proposal? Want to make a motion?
I want to make sure I get the wording correct.
Talk, talk him up.
We want, we want the CIP proposal to include...
As chairman, I make a motion that we forward to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval, the CIP proposal to include the wrestling facility fieldhouse upgrade and to include the artificial turf for the football field to the stadium. A second. A second.
Second? Falls in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you. So we can do, give it a shot, okay? We had the discussion. We did our motion. All right. Hey, any note matters? We done? We done? Okay.
Make a motion, your adjournment.
Will I say that?
Aye.
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 That's your adjournment.
Nice to begin out early.